Good morning. The December 17th, 2024 Board Work Session is now in order. Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Trent?
Here.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Rendell, can you address the board with the items on the agenda for today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have several items on the agenda today, five presentations. So the first one that we're going to talk about is the proposed academic calendar for year 2526. And for those members in the audience who may not be familiar, there are all kinds of state statutes and board policy requirements about the calendar, like what day we can start. For example, there's a state statute that says we cannot start the academic calendar any earlier than August 10th. If August 10th happens to fall on a weekend, then it's the first Monday after August 10th, that kind of thing. So, and everybody thinks it's always about days, and it's actually about minutes, minutes of instruction. So as we go through the presentation about the 2526 calendar, there's going to be some discussion about increasing minutes. One of the things that we want to do is be able to see if we can increase the number of instructional minutes that we have throughout the year, so that we kind of build hurricane days into the calendar. So that if we do miss a few days due to a hurricane or some other kind of natural disaster or something like that, we don't have to add makeup days. We can absorb, so to speak, the makeup days in the calendar. So that's something that, you know, all of us need to start approaching the academic calendar with a change in mindset that it's not about days, it's about minutes. And so Mr. Pruitt is going to talk a little bit about some of the changes and, you know, go through the academic calendars that the committee has worked up. I don't know if he's going to talk about the committee a little bit, but again, for the audience to know that we don't just, you know, sit in a room and make this calendar up. There's a committee with all kinds of stakeholders on it that looks at the various requirements that we have to meet for the academic calendar and then come up with some proposals. So Mr. Raymer, Chief of Schools, and Mr. Pruitt are going to present the proposed academic calendars for 2526.
Perfect. Well, good morning, Board, and thank you for the opportunity to receive Board Direction on the 2526 calendar and the tentative 2627 calendar. So with me today, I have Mr. Pruitt. He is our Director of Leadership Development, which is under the Chief of Schools and School Leadership Department. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pruitt. He's going to walk through the committee that was involved, the recommendations regarding 2526 calendar, and then the tentative 2627 calendar.
Good morning, Board. Good morning. Thanks for having me this morning. And I just want to take a few minutes to kind of run through the Calendar Committee presentation that we put together with our folks here at BPS. Just a great group of folks that we had from all different parts of our district, school principals and different folks here with different organizations within our district that comprise the committee. We met October 31st and kind of went through some of the calendar parameters as Dr. Rendell shared with us, you know, just the different state statutes, state board rules that kind of guide our calendar as we move to build those, making sure that we have enough hours and minutes in the school year. As Dr. Rendell said, it's minutes versus days, you know, we had talked about that. 4,050 minutes per semester for high school credit classes, and of course, you know, doubling that, 8100 minutes per year for high school credit classes, just making sure that we have those built into the calendar. First day is permitted no sooner than August 1st, or excuse me, August 10th by state legislation. And then, of course, you know, consideration for professional development, professional learning, workdays, hurricane makeup days, and graduation days. All of those kind of went into the discussion as we built the proposed 2526 school year calendar, as well as the 2627. So again, the 4,050 minutes each semester and the current tentative that you guys have, the manila folder in front of you, first semester that we had currently, that's on the website for 2526, had 4,052 minutes for first semester, and then second semester was 4,159 minutes. So it's, it was roughly 2.2 days of instruction that we had built into the calendar for second semester. So we put the committee together with the idea of trying to address the makeup days. BFT was part of that, and they recognized the need to help with the minutes and given us more time in the calendar, and they agreed to reduce the early release days from 75 minutes of planning to 60 minutes of planning, which in turn put those minutes back into the calendar, which again, allowed us to build in some more instructional time for those makeup days. Those changes allowed for a day first semester and three days second semester, you know, that we have built in to address any hurricane makeup days, graduation, things that would take away from the instructional time to make sure that we had the time built in. So again, the calendars are in front of you with the manila folder that I gave you, the proposed 2526, along with, you know, some of the recommendations that we put together. You know, part of the recommendations that we have, if you go to the very back of your folder, is the hurricane makeup day priority recommendation. And again, I go back to the minutes that we have built into this proposed 2526 that allows us to have some flexibility with the timing that we have in the school year, in the calendar. So looking at, you know, making a priority list of days in the event that we had to miss. We have one day built in first semester, so we wouldn't have to really adjust our calendar for 2526. If we had to miss two days, we would push into second semester, you know, kind of like what we did this year. Same thing with three days, we'd push into second semester. So we'd essentially be borrowing the minutes from second semester and putting them into first semester. Beyond that, we start looking at the, if we had to miss a fourth day, and as we continue to build our calendars in future years, if we have the ability to add in a professional learning day during the second semester, we could use that day as a potential hurricane day as well. So again, not taking or adding anything to the calendar that had already been built in. Days five and six, that's when we start looking at having to take our professional learning days that are built in the calendar and any student teacher holidays that we had. Those would be the days five and day six that we would need, you know, to make sure we capture enough minutes to meet that minimum state legislation for the 4050. Looking at the current tentative calendar, again, in your folder, we have the current one that's out on the board website right now. We had to make some adjustments to address spring break with Eastern Florida. So the current proposed, or excuse me, current tentative calendar 2526 is currently out there with the spring break. I believe it's the 17th of March. The Eastern Florida calendar with spring break is the following week. So the proposed calendar that we have put forward is the proposed 2526 that addresses the week shift of spring break. In addition, as I shared in the presentation with BFT, the early release time, the early release days, you know, part of the discussion with BFT and recognizing the minutes is they agreed to take away the first early release Friday of the school year and make that a regular school day, and then again, reducing the planning time from 75 to 60 minutes there for the rest of the school year on early release days. So by doing so, by doing all of that, taking away that first early release Friday, and then reducing, that's where those minutes came in for us to build into the calendar. So those are the two changes for 2526 is the spring break and then the early release time and the getting rid of that first one, the first week of school, August 15th. Any questions on the proposed 2526 calendar?
So I think it's important to note that Thanksgiving break, which is now the full week, is not a part of our makeup plan. And I know that that means a lot to families and to our students and staff that they have that time with their family and not have to worry about that Monday or Tuesday potentially being pulled as a makeup day. So those are days that we committed to being holiday days and off days for students and staff.
I mean, I'll say a thank you for the board, for sure, of all the hard work, all those names that come up there. It's amazing the amount of work that goes into the calendar making. My very first year when I sat down and I saw all the effort that went into this. It's, I mean, it is a lot of moving parts. It's a tough job to have, so thank you, Mr. Pruitt.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
But Ford, questions for this? Katie, would you like to be first?
Just really quickly, I, I thanked him privately, but I wanted to thank Mr. Calucci for his cooperation in these negotiations because in addition to the ability to make up hurricane days, this allows instructional minutes, and two extra minutes a day may not seem, per high school class may not seem a whole lot, but over the year, it does add up, and so I appreciate that, the work that he did with HR to negotiate that. Also, I'm looking at the priority days, and it looks like until we get to the four-day, five-day, five-day, six-day mark, we won't incur any additional costs in the bus drivers, IA's cafeteria staff that we don't hire on the, and I know, I can't remember what the amount is. I want to say like $200,000, somewhere in that range, every time we have to bring all those staff who wouldn't be there. The teachers are getting paid for that day, but those staff aren't. And so it occurs additional costs, because we do pay those people on a hurricane day, even though they're not doing their job on that particular day. So I appreciate that that gives us a little more wiggle room in that without incurring additional costs until we get into major days off. So thank you.
All right, I'll go next. Thank you for taking the time to one-on-one, meet with each one of us, and really kind of go through the calendar. It was, I think most people just think this thing gets thrown together, and they don't really understand all that goes into building a calendar. And I expressed this on our 101, one-on-one, excuse me. The recommendation of adding a couple parents to the Calendar Committee, I think that's a valuable input that we should look to add in the future. One of the other things I think that would help is a uniform bell schedule. It's very complicated when we're looking at specific schools and saying, wait, this school has enough minutes, that school doesn't have enough minutes, because we're, based on whether it's primary or secondary, I believe it should be uniformed. That way, we can manage it a little easier. And I expressed this before, this is not necessarily to you, but it would be advantageous for the DOE to look at allowing our start date to be August 1st. Most of our hurricane makeup days all fall in the first semester. So we have the flexibility more so in the second semester, but we need them in the first semester. So if we were able to push that back, that would help tremendously. And the last thing I'm going to say, which should come as no surprise to my fellow board members, is that I, again, am pushing for this modified calendar. And I have given this thing out, every time I get the chance to give it to somebody, I give it to somebody to have them look at it. And it's quite inspiring to hear people, I mean, as far as our educators, our students, our families go, oh my gosh, this could be so good for our family. So thank you for doing the work there on the tentative year-round calendar, which we're going to call Modified Calendar. But I still want to push forward with really looking at, for 2526, sending out a survey to our families targeting specifically the Port St. John community, because there are three elementary schools, and there's a junior, senior, to ask them to put up calendar A, being our traditional school calendar, and calendar B being the modified calendar, and ask the families, which calendar would you prefer for your family? A very simple survey, just so that a family in the community can have some input there, and just targeting those specific students that are enrolled in those schools, just to see what their thoughts are. We could expand it further, if you want to expand it further, because I already told you guys before, I would love this to be a district-wide initiative. But I understand the taking the cautious approach and making sure that everything runs smoothly. It's going great at Challenger 7. Challenger 7 also didn't have quite as many makeup days that they had to make, because one of those hurricanes happened during a break period. So another advantage to this wonderful calendar. But thank you for all your work. I appreciate the one-on-one and all that you've done to make this calendar happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Susan?
Yes, thank you so much for taking the time with us. I know that you worked with the community. I think you do a great job. Yes, Ms. Wright, your initiative is very successful over there, and I support it to expand other schools when we're ready. But I do think that everything that was said is pretty much in line. Thank you, Ms. Campbell, for everything that you implicated in everything else, and we're good. Thank you.
Great, great. You guys, thanks, once again, I mean, in the one-on-one, I mean, those out there might think this is all we see, but we spent quality time with you guys to go through this, the amount of effort. Ms. Wright, I thought I saw this somewhere else, but using this as your Christmas card?
I should have. You're right. That would have been a good ploy there.
But some of the suggestions that we hear appears perfect. I do believe involving more, getting more input from the parents is a good thing. Maybe a survey, we had talked about, about some of the options moving forward. I think that's important, but again, you've gone over and beyond. So I look forward to getting this approved and moved on, so.
Mr. Trent, may I just ask one more thing real fast? Just, Board, I know we're missing one member right now, but do I, do we have support, or does the board have an appetite for surveying the families as soon as a 2526 calendar year for the Port St. John community to be set up on that year-round modified calendar? So send the survey out in January, see what the feedback is, bring that back to our board, depending on what that feedback looks like, we further this discussion as soon as 2526.
Want to move all the elementary schools in Port?
Yeah, the three that are in Port St. John, well, it would only be additional two, and then the secondary. But the main first step would be, we need to survey the families to make sure this is something that they would be in support of, and then get that feedback back. And I know it's going to be very quick timing, but it was very quick timing for Challenger 7, and the district did a phenomenal job. Thank you so much for all that we're a part of that. So Board, do you have an appetite for going ahead and sending a survey out in January?
So I don't have a problem with sending out a survey to the Port St. John families. I would have more pushback on trying to make it happen for 2526 because of the timeline of placement of staff. So that process begins early, I believe in January, when you're talking about positions filled and, and, you know, once we get the survey, then we're coming back to the board and, you know, and the schools, and making decisions, and getting votes. And then we have to find out which staff want to stay, which staff don't want to go. And while Challenger 7, we had a good retention rate of staff. When you're talking about like a junior, senior high, I think you're going to have a little more movement of staff, and that, you know, when it talks, when we talk about the calendar, and because it was just in the leadership team packet in the last, it was last week, I think. Here's the timeline principles of when you need to know which teachers are coming back, and when you offer them a contract, and if they came on late, you know. And that whole shuffle of staff is going, it's going to be significant when you're talking about more than one school. So I'm not in favor of trying to ask staff to fast-track it for 2526, but if we get a favorable input, that gives us a year to start doing the transitions to let people think about whether they want to stay, whether they want to go, what their options are. Because the other thing is, the choice windows open for families, well, for our choice schools, they've already closed.
Right.
They closed last week. But for, by the time we get through with all this, the windows for like secondary ELO and EPO options, those will have already gone on, potentially could be closed too. So that's just a lot of putting everybody in a whirlwind of activity when we could just pace it out and give us, give everybody another year, if that's what the community desires.
Ms., can I ask a quick question, Ms. Campbell? Were you, when you said, because the anomaly of the secondary, I've looked at extensively on this project, because of, you know, being a secondary teacher and stuff like that, I can see the ins and outs and everything else. You had mentioned that you felt like there was going to be a lot of movement in the secondary in Port St. John. Is there a reason behind that? Like, you had mentioned something about, I just, it would help me understand where you're coming from.
This is, to be quite honest, Mr. Susan, I mean, I don't know how much research you've done. I haven't done research, but my guess is, one, you've got a larger staff. An elementary school the size of Challenger 7 has maybe, what, 34, you know, handful of dozen teachers. When you're talking about a junior, senior high with a population of, you know, 13 to 1600 kids, you've got that many more staff, and it's not just the teachers, it's that many more administrators, that many more support staff there. So you're talking about a lot more people, and it's a lot easier, more easily done. And you're talking about a lot more activities, because junior, seniors have all the sports activities and all the music activities, and they have to coordinate around it, just, you know, just let me go in the music world. You guys know the sports world, I know you know that better than me, Mr. Susan. In the music world, the music performance assessments, those are calendared way in advance. And it doesn't matter whether you're a year-round schedule or traditional schedule. The Orchestra MPA, for example, is going to be on these dates. And some dates we control as a district, our local people do, but some dates, they're offered by the state. And so without having that year in advance of thinking, how are we going to do the calendar in a way for a secondary school that will coordinate with all the many activities that our high schools in particular have to participate in, that's a lot of twist, twisting and wrenching people to get those things happening. We just don't have enough time. There's a lot more to look at in a secondary school than an elementary school. And so that's why I think there's, there potentially could be movement.
If I may just jump in just real fast, address a couple of these things?
Absolutely.
Okay, just because it's a good conversation we have to have. Sorry, guys, I know you're like, oh, we're having this, you know, in-depth conversation. As you know, my child attends Space Coast, so I am at that school every single day. And interestingly enough, I've taken a very unofficial survey of putting this calendar in front of all of the staff, and every single one of them is like, oh my gosh, please, 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 make this happen. So I really think the survey will be revealing to us on, hey, how encouraging is this? Are people really in favor of this or not? And then move from there. I know it seems like we're moving very quickly. I understand that. Last year, it felt the exact same way. We didn't get the notification from the state until, what was it, February?
I believe it was February.
February, right, that we were approved to be one of the five pilot schools in the state of Florida, and that was still able to be set up and happen. Now, of course, Challenger 7 previously had year-round, so it was a little easier. But I'm just saying that to say, this isn't, we're not moving any faster than we did the previous year. And I know it's an unknown, and there's, and I understand the music, the sports, those are some concerns. So I am curious to hear from our coaches and the people that take those additional supplements. Is this a concern for you? Are you willing to still bleed out in those programs if this falls during break time? Because you still would have some responsibilities there, depending on what it is, right? So I just, I think the survey's a good starting point. I know it seems fast. Government doesn't like to move fast, which drives me absolutely insane, because I like to try something, let's see if it works. If it doesn't, then we can change directions. But I think we should start with surveying and then have a conversation in January when we come back and say, what do the survey results look like? And then if we want to expand it beyond just the Port St. John community, then we can look at that as well for a district-wide, and that being a slower initiative, if that's something the board has an appetite for pursuing. Thank you.
So I agree with you as far as see what the survey comes. I did want to give you a little bit of thought process through the activities with the sports, and I'm not sure about the music, Ms. Campbell. But one of the things you can look at to get an example of what this would look like is your wrestling and some of your other sports that carry on through Thanksgiving, through Christmas. Take and work through many of those holidays, and being a former wrestling coach, it's just second nature. And so I reached out, so there's an example that you can see that we already are taking sports through some of these breaks. The other thing is, is that as a former coach, and some of the coaches I've talked to about it, they're excited about this, because if they can get those kids for a longer period of time, they can really break stuff down. When you have a practice right after school, you can only go for so long when the kid's been in school all day and everything else, before it gets to be too late. With these days off, they could actually enhance some of their practices and do different stuff. You could almost do two-a-days to work them out for the games. And that is extremely impactful for some of the ones that I've talked to, not all of them. And just like Ms. Wright was saying, you know, we all have our friends that we call and say, hey, what do you think about it? And stuff like that. But some of the staff that I've talked to, some of my friends that I've talked to actually are teachers, because I used to teach there for six years at Space Coast High School, and they were positive about this too. And it's just a, you know, hey, I'm testing out who I know and some of the veteran teachers. So I just wanted to let you know that. I'm okay with the survey. And then I'm okay if the survey is very positive and staff feels like, hey, we can possibly do this to move in that direction, but, you know, let's do the survey, I think. I think that's respectful, and then we can get some answers back from that.
Just to be clear about a couple of things. One, I've made it very clear, I'm fine with the survey going to the Port St. John community. I said that, didn't I? Okay? Two, I am not against, if the Port St. John community says yes, giving them that calendar. What I'm against is asking people to move the world on a much more complicated process, because moving a secondary school is so much more complicated in the shortened timeframe. That is what I am opposed to. Now, if we come back and the survey says 95% of students, you know, families, staff say, go, then maybe we can, like, but right now, I can't give you that commitment. So if your question was multipart, so again, I'm going to go with the community. But I, it's the shortened timeline that I am resistant to at this time, okay? And I, for, just for the record, sports is extracurricular, and I know there's rules that follow FHSIA break or no break, but music is not extracurricular, it's co-curricular. And so you're talking about things that kids are getting grades for. And quite frequently, they get grades for after-school performances, I mean, all performance, you know, the grades for after-school performances as well as rehearsals. So that's a little bit harder to do on a break when it's co-curricular, it's required. So just want to add that in there.
Dr. Rendell, would you like to add anything on the air?
Yeah, no, I mean, we have clear consensus to issue a survey right when we get back from break on a modified calendar in the Port St. John community, so we will do that. And maybe set some parameters for what we, you know, view as strongly positive, positive, lukewarm, that kind of thing. And then, you know, based on those results, come back to the board with, you know, action, either immediately or long-term, that kind of thing. So we've got that for sure. We've got direction on that for sure. I think Mr. Pruitt still has more, though.
I do.
You do. Oh, I thought you were done with your presentation.
That was his year one. That was the first year.
So just for clarification, for the 2526, both modified year-round and traditional schedule, we are good. We'd like to go to the January board meeting for approval, if that is, okay. The second question I have, Ms. Wright, is you brought up more of a uniform bell schedule, most likely for our secondary schools. We did work this year to up the requirement or the expectation for number of minutes in a traditional day and early release day. So everybody was pretty much on the same level. Would you like us to pursue moving towards more uniform, to adding more minutes to some of those days if we review schedules and calendars? Are you trying to help us build more minutes into the calendar?
I think until, until the DOE looks at possibly changing a start date, it would be smart for us to do that because we always end up in a shortage in the first semester. That's my personal opinion. I don't know what everyone else up here feels, but I think if all of our secondary are on a uniform and we can build a couple extra minutes in there each week, that will help us.
So we, we went with, every secondary school had to have a minimum of 48 minutes in a Monday through Thursday and a minimum of 37 in, on Friday. And we moved all schools to those numbers this year to make sure that we were at least in the same arena as one another when it came to potential makeup days and minutes. We can pursue maybe 48 to 49 or 37 to 38 because as Ms. Campbell said, even though it's two minutes, two minutes is two minutes, right? It's good instruction and also builds up. We have 72 non-early release days in first semester and you have an extra minute, there's 72 minutes, which is about a day and a half, a little bit over, that is built in right there and gives kids and teachers more instructional time.
Yes, absolutely. I'm in favor of that, or you?
Okay. Yes.
So I, I appreciate you guys doing, asking schools to get the minimum minutes. And I think when we make this change this next year with the reducing the early release days, we need to make sure it's clear to schools, don't do something funky with your calendar and creative, this is to give you those two extra minutes, right? So whatever number you gave them this year, add two to it and, you know, and so we can make sure we have those. But that's different from, I think Ms. Wright was asking for a uniform bell schedule. I'm opposed to that for this reason. I think we need to let our schools have the flexibility to build however they're going to be so that if you're, if you're thinking a uniform bell schedule, meaning everybody's first period goes from 8:45 to whatever, second period, because there's so many variables. We still have a few schools that utilize the power hour and they are not the schools who have the minutes problem usually. I know a lot of schools used, more schools used to have them and we had some discipline issues in the last handful of years that they got rid. But there are still schools, I believe, that are using them, like West Shore, I think is still using them, for example. I think O'Gally was one of the last holdouts before, I think they, I don't know if they still have theirs. But the other thing is, some schools have two lunches, some schools have three, some schools have four. And so I would, I'm in favor of allowing, allowing the principals to continue to have that flexibility to build their own bell schedule. Some are having shorter passing periods. So whatever works for their campus, I think we need to allow the administrators to continue to have that flexibility.
Yeah, so we would look at not necessarily doing first period starts at this, this time for everybody ends at that time and passing is this time, everybody has two lunches or whatever that may be. We can review, can we get 49 minutes in Monday through Thursday as opposed to 48? And we're going to go from 37 to 39 because of the reduction of time for that. Can we get from 39 to 40? So that's, that's what we look at. You are 100% correct. Some of the cafeterias, different sizes, number of students, there's just a lot of variables for each school. Allow them a little bit of autonomy where we would just set the bar at, you can do what you need to do within your schedule, but here's what you have to have in your periods. And then they would be able to decide. Number of lunches, passing time, things of that nature. Is that?
Yeah, no, that's what I, I agree with that 100%. Yes. So sorry, I, when I said uniform bell schedule, you're right, I'm, I'm using the wrong word. And so thank you for correcting me on that because it does sound like I want everyone's first period to be the same minutes, start at the same time and at the same time, but correct, adding the minutes to the class and however the school wants to figure out how they're doing that, that's perfectly fine. As long as we're starting the day at the same time and we're ending the day at the same time. That is really the overall objective, same, and they can do what they want with those minutes within.
Well, if we're going to talk about, since we're talking about surveys and trying to capture as many minutes as possible, are we talking about a survey as well to the all of Brevard to find out maybe information on early release days, what, what we feel about having those, both from DPS employees and parents? Is there any conversation of that?
Yeah, so we did talk with Mr. Calucci and BFT and, you know, he had talked with his constituents and within the BFT organization of their thoughts on reducing from 75 to 60 or protecting Thanksgiving. We can do a more extensive survey, if you'd like, across the district, just asking parents and families and stakeholders about the early release days and time. We'd have to work with BFT on what that survey would look like.
Have, have, have we looked at the what-ifs? Like what, and if we didn't have, for example, if we didn't have those early release days on Fridays, what would that do to our calendar?
Build in a lot of minutes. We still got to go 180 days or equivalent. We would have a lot of flexibility, to be honest, with what we would do within the, this schedule and the calendar and what it could actually look like. So what it would essentially do is it would build in, we'll just say, now it's 39 to nine minutes a day, so, you know, you're looking at seven, 800 extra minutes that we'd be able to work with, somewhere around there, which would build in a lot of hurricane days, but it'd also build in some other opportunities within the calendar.
Okay. Thank you. Guys, you have more?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to talk a little bit about 26, 27.
Yes, exactly.
Go ahead. So we did, we did go back and revise some of the 26, 27 based on the discussion we had with BFT when reducing the minutes. And then looking at the start date of August 10th, you know, in 26, 27, we finished well before Memorial Day, you know, so the, the way the calendar shook out, we finished before Memorial Day. You know, the, the spring break, we would certainly look and want to match that with Eastern Florida so that we didn't have to go back and revise. So that's the discussion I'm currently having with Eastern Florida, making sure that we match with that. But you have the draft 26, 27 calendar in front of you. We did make some adjustments as we met with our one-on-one about that, that possibility of a PD day. Ms. Campbell asked me about that and Mr. Raymer and I put our heads together. We were looking at the days and making sure that we, we were 180 for the students and 190 for the, the teachers. And we found where everything kind of shook out and what you have in front of you is the proposed 26, 27 calendar. Again, with the early release being 60 minutes and then no early release the first Friday of the school year. And then with the goal of the same hurricane makeup priority days as well as getting the spring break in line with Eastern, Eastern Florida when, when the time comes for them to put together their 26, 27 calendar.
Where is the new day? I'm not seeing that on this one. When we had our one-on-one.
Yes, and that, that's what I was saying, we, because you had asked me about where that new day came from. And Mr. Raymer and I talked about that and we couldn't figure it out and we're looking at it, looking at it.
Okay.
And we found it. So it's, it's gone away.
Yeah, it's no longer on the calendar.
It's no longer there. But we are, if you notice, the, the end time, again, is well before Memorial Day.
So we just moved the last day of school.
As we discussed, yes, ma'am, we pushed it up.
Okay, so I wasn't crazy.
No, ma'am, you were not. No.
Okay, thank you.
But we got the 180 student days, 190 staff days, all fell within, within the parameters that we had and it, and it bumped up the end one day.
Fantastic.
And then, of course, the, as Ms. Wright shared, we already, we have the draft 25, 26 year-round calendar also as part of the, the package, if you will, of the, the three different calendars for the, over the course of the next two years.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this, are we likely, because it sounds like IFSC hasn't made up their minds, I mean, if we, how close are we to gelling so that we're not having to revise? And I only ask that because there are occasions that people want to do like super far-out planning and if our spring break moves, it can cause a problem. And I know we're, you know, we're here, it's well over a year before the calendar we're looking at for next year we're approving, but how, how likely are we to, you know, get that, some kind of agreement with them that, hey, whoever figures it out first wins?
I did, I did reach out to Eastern Florida about 26, 27 and gave them our tentative plan for spring break. So they have that when their committee gets, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, they already have it.
Good, thank you.
I do want to make a quick adjustment. So I, when we talked about the early release days, I did all days, it would actually pick up 100 to 125 minutes because it would actually only be the early release days I looked at the full semester. So if we were to do that, about 15 or so in my head, early release days, that's, you know, roughly nine extra minutes, pick up a, you know, that's what we would pick up there. So I apologize for the bad math on my part the first time around.
It was on the fly, so.
Yeah, so that, that's what we look up, or that's what we would pick up if we were to work in that direction or talk more about that.
Any other questions? All good? Dr. Rendell, we're all good?
Yeah, with the board's direction, what we're going to do is put the revised, proposed 25, 26 calendar and the 26, 27 calendars on the website for people to review and we'll put them on the agenda for board approval in the January board business meeting. And we're going to do the survey. And we're going to do the survey of the Port St. John community.
Guys, we appreciate all of your work all the time, so thank you and you have nothing more?
All right, Mr. Chair, so the next presentation is going to be on the five-year strategic plan. So like most organizations, Brevard Public Schools has a five-year strategic plan. The previous plan or the plan we're currently under did conclude with last school year, concluded in summer. And so what we asked staff to do was to take a look at that plan and revise that plan. We could have contracted with an outside agency and had them come in and do a lot of work soliciting feedback from the community or, you know, reviewing the plan from their lens and then coming up with a new plan. But that costs money and we had just done that with the previous five-year plan. So we thought we would save some money and just have staff review, you know, the five-year plan we were working on and then, you know, make some changes and revisions to it. So that's what we're going to present to you today is our recommended revisions to the previous plan and, you know, hopefully move to adopt that as our next five-year strategic plan. Some of the things that you will notice if you look through the plan is we've tried to add a lot more measurables, concrete measurables, to see if we are actually accomplishing the things we want to accomplish. So, you know, Mr. Wilson, Chief Operating Officer, and Cynthia Ryan are going to present. Cynthia really has been the driving force behind this. Instead of hiring a consultant, we just told Cynthia to do this. So she has done a lot of work and she is the expert. And so she's not going to go into too much detail today in this presentation. We actually have a big workday schedule in January, we dive deep into last year's plan and this year's plan and you'll be invited to that. And, you know, there's just a lot of detail, but I think that the differences in this plan is there's a few more concrete measurables for a lot of our objectives. So turn it over to Mr. Wilson and Cynthia.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Rendell. Dr. Rendell, thank you for stealing my introduction, I appreciate it. But no worries, job well done. Today's presentation, as Dr. Rendell mentioned, is just a, will be a high-level overview of the newly revised and updated five-year strategic plan. And as he also mentioned, got to give a lot of credit to Cynthia Ryan and her leadership throughout this process. She ensured that we, and I say we, me and my colleagues, stayed the course and on track to make sure we had very strong measurable goals throughout the strategic plan. And she kept us in line. She's a taskmaster, for those of you that aren't aware of her, of her work ethic. And she did a phenomenal job of staying in constant communication with the cabinet to make sure that the deadlines were hit so we would be able to present today before the year ended to share with you the new plan. Without further ado, it appears that we're having some technical difficulties here.
Keep going, keep going.
It appeared we're having some technical difficulties here. But without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and, and turn this presentation over to Ms. Cynthia Ryan.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and thank you, Dr. Rendell. And thank you, Board Chair and Board Members, for the opportunity to speak with you today to present an overview of the 20, 25, 23 strategic plan. We've completed the update and developed a modified plan. And I'm excited to share the direction we'll be looking toward over the next five years pending your approval. Our family's helped the priorities to work with our support student success. From my perspective. Can you make sure it's put on? There we have it. It zeroes in on important areas like academic achievement, operationally efficiency, and student well-being, making sure our schools are always evolving to meet the changing needs of our schools. The plan was updated and developed through a comprehensive review of division priorities, past achievements, and ongoing work. It reflects reoccurring themes and priorities that have emerged from past discussions with families, staff, and stakeholders. It emphasizes key priorities we know are important to our community, including closing achievement gaps, supporting students' mental and physical health, and preparing students for future success. As we worked on updating the plan, it was truly a collaborative effort. We made sure to incorporate very valuable input from every division and department, ensuring that everyone had a voice in shaping the direction. There was also a significant effort put into refining and streamlining the plan. We made sure that all performance indicators and metrics are smart, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound so that we can track progress and stay on track. As mentioned, the updated plan ensures that all divisions are well-represented, making it a comprehensive roadmap for our future. Let's look at a comparison between the 2019, 24 versus the 2025 and 2030 plan. The 2019, 24 plan had four goals, 17 objectives with 17 corresponding performance indicators with 66 strategies and 95 metrics. However, tracking progress was a challenge because many of the performance indicators and metrics were not smart, meaning they weren't specific, specific or as measurable as needed. Now, in the updated 25, 2030 plan, we still have four goals, but we've increased our objectives to 18 with 18 corresponding SMART performance indicators. And we've streamlined the strategies down to 53 and reduced the number of metrics to 53 corresponding SMART metrics. This new approach provides a much clearer and more actionable framework to help us track our progress and achieve success. I'd like to highlight our core guiding principles because these are the foundation of everything that we do. Our vision is simple but powerful, deliver the highest quality education. That's our goal, that's what drives us every day. Our mission is about setting a high standard. We're here to serve every student with excellence, no exceptions. Every decision, every action should reflect that. And our organizational values focus on what really matters, respect, quality, accountability, teamwork, and more. These values guide our work and how we interact with each other and with our community. These core guiding principles will shape our actions and ensure we stay true to our purpose as we work toward achieving our strategic plan goals. These are the four benchmarks and key performance indicators that will be used to measure our district's overall success in meeting the needs of our students. Achieving success in these areas relies on educators and staff working together to meet the goals, objectives, and strategies outlined in this plan. The previous plan included the same benchmarks, but the performance indicators weren't smart. There were few specific numbers or targets to aim for. In contrast, this plan outlines these clear and ambitious SMART key performance indicators, giving us specific measurable targets to strive for. Our first benchmark is third-grade literacy and the key performance indicator is to increase proficiency from 59% to 71% by the end of school year 2030. Algebraic success is to increase pass rate from 72 to 84% by the end of school year 2030. College and career acceleration, to increase digital tool certifications for elementary students from 8% to 38%, raise fifth-grade science proficiency from 58% to 76%, grow middle schoolers accessing acceleration opportunities from 70% to 93%, and to boost high school markers of acceleration from 74% to 92%, all by the end of school year 2030. And finally, graduation rate, to attain a 95% graduation rate annually for all subgroups.
So I'm going to interrupt Cynthia right there. So this is kind of the metrics that we can look at from the 30,000-foot view all the time. Are we on track to meet these metrics? And the, the 2030 goals are actually pretty ambitious. Those are some pretty high numbers.
Very ambitious.
But the idea is it's a five-year plan and we want to put some things in place to hopefully increase by 2% each year or whatever the quota would be to get to the goal in five years. And so, you know, these are, these are all actually pretty ambitious numbers. So, but the idea is if we work the plan for five years, we can hopefully get to those. So the idea is if we work the plan for five years, we can hopefully get to those. Sorry.
That's right. And to reach those benchmarks, our strategic plan focuses on four critical goals. These four goals are consistent with those we focused on last year with one key update: we've shifted from operational sustainability to emphasizing operational efficiency. This change reflects our commitment to continuous improvement and adapting to evolving needs. So our first goal is academic excellence: to empower students for future success; exceptional workforce: to recruit and retain top talent; community connection: to build trust and enhance the district's reputation; and operational efficiency: to ensure efficiency to support academic success. And to achieve those goals, we have 18 objectives. So today, I'd like to highlight just a couple of them, along with their SMART performance indicators, to give you another sample of how we're improving the way we measure and track our progress. The grade words on the screen are the previous performance indicators. So Objective E1: recruit a strong pool of candidates for all classifications within Brevard Public Schools. And the performance indicator is to increase open-position fill rate from 90% to 95% by the end of school year 2025 and maintain a 95% fill rate through school year 2030. And Objective C1: to strengthen public trust in district decisions and leadership. And the performance indicator is to secure at least 10 positive media stories each quarter highlighting district initiatives. And these are only a couple of our objectives, but rest assured that the remaining 16 come with, come along with SMART performance indicators. Additionally, as I mentioned earlier, all 53 strategies designed to meet our objectives are supported by their own corresponding SMART metrics. Now, I am just incredibly proud of the Cabinet and staff's willingness to set ambitious targets throughout this five-year plan. It shows their dedication and commitment to pushing us forward. We set these high expectations because we know that striving for excellence is what drives real progress. And by aiming high, we force ourselves to innovate, face challenges head-on, and accomplish things we might not have thought possible. Ambitious goals inspire growth, keep us focused, and ensure we're all aligned with our vision for the future. On the other hand, setting mediocre goals can hold us back and limit the potential of our students, staff, and our community. By aiming high, we will create constant opportunities for improvement and make sure that every step forward has a meaningful impact on the success of our community. So that concludes my high-level overview of our new five-year strategic plan. As you know, an electronic copy was provided to you before today's meeting, and hard copies were made available through Lena. I hope you had a chance to review it. The full plan is comprehensive, you know, nearly 50 pages, and I understand it's a lot to take in. So I'd like to open the floor for any questions or thoughts you may have about the plan. If you'd like, we can go page by page, or I'm happy to walk through any sections in more detail.
Okay, Board. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
All right.
All right. Okay. As someone who doesn't love acronyms, I like this one. So go ahead and tell me again, what is, what do the acronym SMART stand for?
SMART. So it's, it's specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. I am excited about this. I've been a firm believer of you cannot hit a target you do not have, right? And so just having a general goal out there, we need to be specific and how in, and that way we can really be detailed in what we're doing. So I'm excited about the new strategic plan. I, I will tell you, they are extremely ambitious goals. When I first saw it, my eyes went up and I went, woo, I hope we do achieve this, because if we achieve this, we will be back into one of the top districts in the state. I really believe that. So kudos to the team on all the hard work that you've put in there. Kudos to you. That's why you got the oil can, like you, well-deserving person you are. But no, I'm excited about what this looks like for us in the future. So thank you.
Thank you and the whole team for the work that you have continued to do. And even though, even in between the, the ending of the one and now, everybody's continuing to pursue that. And I know because I've sat in some of the meetings, gotten to be a fly on the wall over the past years of when everybody came together across all departments and worked on these goals, even sometimes ones that weren't under your purview, to get input so that the academic team got input from the operations side, and the operations side got input from, you know, the financial side, you know, I guess, the same communications side, all of that, so working together. And I do know that I've heard that term, the SMART goals. We may not have implemented them with fidelity, but you were constantly challenging, and so was your predecessor, Mr. Novelli. Same thing. We got to be SMART goals, SMART goals, SMART goals. I'm glad that we put people's feet to the fire. It's time to get it, get it all revised. I think that's great. You know, I was thinking, as we were talking about those ambitious goals, I'm like, okay, did we look at what, like St. John's County and some of those? But the thing is, we can't look at what they have and aim for that because that's assuming that they're going to stay where they are. And I know for a fact that that's not their intention, just to stay at the same levels. They're also constantly trying to improve. And at the FSBA conference a couple of weeks ago, we heard multiple districts say they're going to be the number-one district in the state in its X-number timeframe. So we're all shooting for the same target. So I think that those ambitious goals are good. There's a section in here, we've had, I think there's been a bit of a pause in it over the last couple, couple of years as we've had new board members put there. Previously, we've had those board champions, and I'm glad that you highlighted that. And I don't know, I, I, it's kind of like the wizard, the one picks the wizard board that the staff gets to kind of pick. I mean, if we had an area we really wanted to do, but I don't know if you noticed where you were assigned, I think Mr. Trent, Ms. Wright on academics, and Mr. Susan on operations and, you know, communications. So I just want to make sure you guys highlighted that because before we had the pause, I know that was something regularly that, you know, we met with our area leaders and just to, to get feedback and updates and when they were doing those major revisions, we got invited in to have some input and on different projects that were being done. So just want to make sure that you guys noticed that. And, you know, sometimes staff gets, staff gets busy. It's, it's our prerogative, and our schedules are tight, to reach out to them and say, hey, could I meet with you? Or when, you know, what do, when would be a good time to meet? To make sure that we're connecting. And then when we do our board reports and our board meeting, those are sometimes things that we can bring to shout out, to highlight to the rest of the board and to the community and the district, some awesome things that are going and some challenging things, too. So that, those board champion positions are really important. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I really enjoy the fact that you guys have the SMART measurable items, but what people don't understand is, is that from the layman terms of being a parent or being somebody like that, when you looked at the old strategic plan, it's difficult to try to see those metrics and see the available metrics and get those metrics and see if we're doing it. There were so many layers that a parent would look at an objective and they would say, okay, it seems like they can move that direction, but these are like specific. I mean, communications has to increase our enrollment by 1% each year. You know what I mean? You look at 90 to 95% for retention inside of HR and some of the other things. I mean, it's, it's an incredible set. And I'll tell you, I'm really excited about it. When I started here in 2005, we were a different district. And I think that we've made some decisions along the way, and now we're on a way to bring that back. Many of you, the Sterling Awards of Excellence that the patri used to bring, the governors, I mean, we used to have area awards. We were a different beast, and now we're getting back to that. And I think I hear it in many of the people inside the Cabinet and in directors, that there's this vision that we should be where we were and not better. So this gets us there, and it gets us to a measurable place so that people can get called out. I mean, let's face it, if you don't have something that's truly measurable and you're not trying to get there by the end of the year, people are going to start scrambling to make sure and work harder towards those goals. So I just really am appreciative of it. I did want to ask, one of the things that we've seen a strong direction inside the, inside this is the athletic participation. Is there a way to add increase of athletic participation in different areas, elementary, middle, and high school? Because we've expanded sports, it's directly attributed to the mental health of the students and stuff like that. Is there a way we can? I saw that in there, but I just didn't see any of the metrics. Like, I was looking for the specific metrics. So I didn't know if there's a way that we could dovetail that. And then the other thing is, is since we're on this topic, and I don't want to bring it back, we do kind of, I'll wait until the end for the STEM piece. So the athletics piece is the only thing that I saw that if we could add it somewhere, even as a subcategory or something, that'd be cool. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, we can look at ways to incorporate a measurement for that.
It's, I just, I've, I've heard such great things about our elementary school sports, how it's driving. I've got some principals that are saying they're using it as a way to keep kids out of trouble because now they're saying you won't be able to play sports in the spring unless you do this. I mean, it's, it's, it's working the way it does in high school. So I think that there's a good measure to, to try to drive, and that's all. That's the only request I had. But amazing, you guys. And I'd like you to present all of the stuff because you do great. When you hit, like, you, you came in, you hit the hot topics, and then you said, okay, anybody else have any questions? So we don't have to go through the 71-page document. So thank you for that. I appreciate you.
That's all great information, guys. And I, I would be shocked, Mr. Susan, if Kevin Robinson didn't have some specific numbers in his mind already about increasing participation, but that's, if I know him, I know it's there. So, but district-wide, it would be great. When, when going through this as a, as a coach, as a former teacher, and in former life, even teaching goals to individuals and goal classes and how to write them, you can't help but to get excited about seeing this. Talk about the SMART goals, measurable, not, not to talk down on the, the last set of goals versus this one, it's night and day. I mean, if you don't have a target, that's right, you, you don't know if you've missed. To give you another acronym is CCMP, Clear Concise Mental Picture. It's hard to do if you don't have a number or if you don't have something specific because you could work this down to what you need to do on a daily basis. I mean, it's a five-year plan, but I'm sure that's what you're talking about. So that keeps the, the team and the group focused, I mean, down to the minute of, if, this is what we need to do to obtain our goals. And without having that specific thing already accomplished in your mind, it, it, it's not obtainable. It's not possible. So thank you for bringing that out. I'm sure it was a team effort, but these are, these are proper goals now. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to helping in any way we can do to make these things obtainable. So, thank you. Anything else, Group? Dr. Rendell?
Yeah, I just want to kind of bring a theme in that we didn't really talk about. And when we asked the leadership at each school building to work on their school improvement plan this last spring as part of the Ascending Conference and everything, one of the messages we wanted them to hear is your, your school improvement plan should be about the stuff you're already doing. Like, this should be the work you're already doing. It shouldn't be additional work. It shouldn't be a plan that you create just to create a plan and put it in a notebook and set it over there. So we tried to approach the strategic plan the same way. This is stuff we should be already doing. And so, you know, we, we're going to measure our effect, you know, on these things that we're already doing. But, you know, this is, the various departments that worked so hard on this did a fantastic job of identifying things that we're already doing or should be doing, and, you know, what goals can we set and how can we measure our progress towards that? And so I feel like we have a really, really good product, but it's really the result of all the work of the people involved. And I actually think Cynthia did a great job of pulling it all together. I feel like we actually have a better project, product than we would have if we had hired a consultant.
Agreed.
You know, so we actually, the people doing the work did the work. And, you know, so...
And on that note, I want to give Dr. Rendell his credit because he and I had a plethora of conversations prior to this process even starting, when we were going through the, looking for consultants, et cetera. I said, we have a person right here within our organization that can do this work. And he trusted the fact that, that, you know, he believed in the fact that I said, we have a person, and our person was none other than Cynthia, and she could do it, she did it, and she did a phenomenal job. So, Dr. Rendell, thank you for believing in the fact that we could get this done in-house.
Well, I appreciate that. You know, I am not an expert in instruction or finance or HR or communication, but after doing this for 10 years, I am dangerously knowledgeable. And I will tell you that every Cabinet member and every staff that I work with, and I push back, and when numbers didn't add up or a strategy didn't make sense, and I would just come up with a, an idea, you know, I'd send it back, or the math isn't right, or this doesn't make sense to me, because I kind of thought of myself as somebody just out there in the public, looking at the plan, and it had to make sense. And I will say they were very open to listening to me and never made me feel like I shouldn't be doing that. So, thank you.
Yeah, truly a team effort.
Yeah.
All right. We don't want to make the same mistake and assume that you don't have anything else to add, like the last presentation, but are, are we done here?
We're done.
Are we good? Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could we meet off with all of Cynthia and Cynthia? I would absolutely support that.
Have to check with HR on that.
There you go.
She's not part of a bargaining unit, so we could probably make that happen. So our next presentation is going to be about the Conduct Stipulation Agreement, the Alternative Learning Center, some recommendations to some changes in expectations and procedures. It's really some change in some paperwork and some forms, but also making sure that every staff member that's involved in the process understands what the rules of the game are, so to speak, what the expectations are and that kind of thing, and make sure we're consistent across the district in the application of these policies. That was one of the things that a couple of years ago with the RSM audit is, you know, these inconsistencies across the district. And we need to make sure we have all the correct terminology in all of our documents and that everybody understands what the expectations are. So Mr. Ray and Ms. Bland are going to be presenting this information.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you. I'm excited to be back at the table as we turn the conversation to our district conduct stipulation agreements, our drug diversion program, and then multiple recommendations for students regarding the placement at our Alternative Learning Center. So with me today, I have our Director of Alternative Sites, Misty Bland. So she is going to do most of the presentation, but I'm going to start us off. So the presentation that you guys have in the folder, as we work through, we started with some DOE data. So we pulled some data from our surrounding counties from the DOE website regarding CSER incidences. So I know Ms. Wright. CSER is School Environmental Safety Incident Reporting. And these are 26 different incidences that can happen on campus that are really crime, violent, or disruptive behavior-related. And if you look in our behavior, our, sorry, our Student Code of Conduct, and you look at our Discipline Plan, you will see all of those asterisks and identified as which ones are CSER codes and which ones are just local codes. So when you look at the data around us, we have Brevard up top. So we have the number of CSER incidents for 21, 22, 22, 23. The DOE has not published 23, 24 data yet. And then how many of those incidents resulted in alternative educational placement setting? And then of the students that were placed in that setting, or depending on the CSER code, how many were expelled with or without continuing education services? So we put our data up there for Brevard Public Schools, and then we put our surrounding schools of Orange, Osceola, Seminole, and Volusia, just so you get a picture of where we're at regarding student discipline, placement ALC, and our expulsion numbers compared to those that surround us.
Can I ask a quick question? Mr. Chairman? Where are we, where are we at in comparison to enrollment for students in these counties versus our county? So can you just ballpark it so I, we have contacts there?
Yeah, so we're much smaller than Orange, all right? So Orange will be, you know, a couple times larger than us regarding schools and student population. Osceola and Seminole will be somewhere in our, our range, and then Volusia will be a smaller district.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask, on that chart, the asterisks, does that represent that Osceola and Volusia are not expelling students?
That represents that there's less than 10.
Okay.
Right? So they don't, they don't quantify unless there's a larger number than 10. So that's what the asterisk represents.
Okay.
So we just want to start off with what the counties around us look like and then what Brevard County looks like, and then work into our data as a county, what we, where we were for the 23, 24 school year, where we are currently. And for that information, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bland.
Can you hear me? First, I'd like to start with the Alternative Learning Center data for the 23, 24. When you look at last year's data, you'll see we were at 623. That is a little lower, and that is due to the drug diversion program, which I am going to discuss on the next slide. Currently, for 24, and currently, you'll see that the South Area annual total, so all the kids that have been there currently up to the date of when this presentation was 142, and the North Area Learning Center annual was 162. So when you combine that, it's about 304. So we are on track to do basically the same that we did in 23, 24. When you look currently where we are right now, you'll see at South Area, we have 107. And if we brought the blended learning kids back, you would see the class size would be 16 for the South Area, the North Area Learning Center's 125, and that class size would be 20. But the current expulsion total right now, you'll see, is 22, and that is lower if you're looking comparative to the expulsion data from the previous year.
Sorry, I have another question. All right. You made a comment, and I just want you to clarify it. The blended learning students we brought back, can you explain what that means to me?
If we brought that back.
If we brought them back. Okay.
So currently, middle school attends Monday and Tuesday, high school attends Wednesday and Thursday. Students that need extra minutes due to an IEP or is not making gains, they're currently, they come in on Fridays for one-to-one based on that class that's needed.
Okay. Thank you.
So when you look at the drug diversion program, you'll see that last year, we finished with 320 and 42 expulsions, and this year, our placement is 159 and seven expulsions. Students are expelled due to lack of attendance, or they failed their drug tests, or they did a Level IV and V infraction at their school.
So what we would like to work through and get some board direction on is our current conduct stipulation agreements for Alternative Learning Center and our current conduct stipulation agreements for our drug diversion students who remain on the campus as per the program that was put in place for last school year. And make sure that we are moving forward in the direction that all of us believe are in the best interest of students, schools, and our stakeholders. So in your packet, we provided you with our current stipulation agreements for the Alternative Learning Center and drug diversion. So we were hoping to work through those and talk about a current, the current one, and then a possible example stipulation agreement of the direction that we could go for both of those options with some considerations of continuation of education, and making sure that we're providing students an engaging opportunity with their academics, graduation, and keeping students on pace to graduate with their cohort, the risk ratio report, school engagement, and then ESE students do receive continuing educational services during expulsion, but our non-ESE students do not. So those are some of our considerations that we would be looking at in the stipulation agreement. So I'm going to have Misty kind of walk through where we are currently in those stipulation agreements, and then talk about the example and look for direction on any movement that we would make with those stipulation agreements. Keep them the same. They have not been reviewed for the ALC in five to six years, so this is a good opportunity for us to review that stipulation agreement. And then drug diversion, just to make sure that last year was the first year that we were implementing the program as desired whenever it was first introduced to Brevard Public Schools.
So the first papers you have in front of you are the current process and example process of the school-based drug diversion program that started, not this year, but the prior year. When you look at this, they are the same. The first part, the only way a student would get expelled from their school for the stipulation conduct agreement is, again, lack of attendance, they fail the drug test, or they complete, they have a Level IV or V infraction. So, and we don't have any other steps besides that. So sometimes there are issues on campus of kids completing Level I, II, and III offenses, and they are currently not put up for an expulsion under this current stipulation conduct agreement. And an example, which is, again, just an example, that students and principals would have the option, depending on a student's behavior, when you turn it over, you'll see that students receive two referrals that are processed as Level I or II. The first offense, they would be suspended five days, and the second offense, they'd be placed up for a 10-day pending full expulsion. And on the second, if a student receives one Level III, IV, or V, they would be placed up for a full expulsion. And again, this is just example, just an example. Do we want to talk about this first before we go to the next one?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm actually, good to move on, but if anybody else has questions.
We have this review to us.
Just, when we put the drug diversion program in place, I think, at least my, maybe we didn't, I don't know that I ever said it quite specifically, but my thought was not that a student, you know, that they had to be pretty much close to perfect. If we're allowing you to stay on campus and stay enrolled in your current classes, and yes, you can be searched all the time, and yes, you have to have, but that you, you better be minding your Ps and Qs. I don't like the idea that a student can, is getting to stay on campus and thinking that they can cuss at a teacher or whatever, and they're just fine. So I think this is, I think this is actually, this update is more of a reflection of what the desire of the board was. So I think that, and it still gives them a little bit of wiggle room, because, you know, it's suspension, which they wouldn't necessarily have been suspended for Level I or II, but it's just showing, hey, you're already on thin ice. So we want to make sure that that, and hopefully, you know, the goal, again, it's have to, you know, what seems, maybe seem obvious to us may not be obviously to the public. The goal is not to expel more kids. The goal is for students to take it seriously and realize, you don't need to be doing this on our campus. So I think this is a better reflection of what our original desires were, and so I'm in favor.
Yeah, through the discussions that we have had, and through discussions that we've had with principals over the past year and a half, looking at this would more align with the intention of the program whenever it was first put in place for last school year. So, and once again, I do want to reiterate what you just said. The goal is to change behavior, change outcomes, and have students moving in the appropriate direction, not expel them. So put in nice language that provides clear expectations and can change behaviors and change outcomes.
Right, right. So not that I, I'll take the, I'm not going to speak for you too, but that, I'm assuming the lack of questions here was in support of what we're doing.
Yeah, that's how I would take it.
Miss Bland made it clear, but...
Yep.
If I may just jump in, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Just, again, to reiterate, I am 100% in favor of the new stipulation agreement. When will this go into effect?
So we would look for a direction on that implementation side.
Okay.
We were looking at two different timeframes. One would be January of '25, as we look at the new semester, and the other one would be August of '25, as we get into the new year, so that we can get everything in place and everybody understands that this is getting implemented. So we'd look for direction from you on the choice in which you would like us to pursue, either January or August.
If I may, I'll go ahead and give you my choice would be January.
Yep.
Can you give us some pros, cons, feedback on, because I know in our conversation, we had some, we don't want kids who are, like, one kid is having one and one kid is having the other, but when the, with the drug stipulation agreement, this is just a one semester expulsion, right?
So we would end up with students on different stipulation agreements regardless of when we implement, because if a student was to do this, let's just say, April of '25, they're still going to be under that stipulation agreement at the turn of the August of '25 school year.
Okay.
So regardless of when we implement this stipulation agreement, we will have to balance a little bit of two different stipulation agreements going on at the same time, but we would be transitioning off of the old one and into the new one as we get into February, March, April.
Well, for me, this one, because this is more a reflection of our original intent, I think this one should be, take effect soon, immediately, January.
Thank you. So I believe we have clear consensus on the stipulation agreement and timeframe implementation. So with that being said, we'd like to go to the current ALC stipulation agreement, work through that one.
The stipulations from the school-based stipulation conduct and the Alternative Learning Center, they mirror each other. They're almost identical except for number six, which talks about a metal detector, students going through that, and then the dress code at the Alternative Learning Center. But when you turn it over, this stipulation conduct agreement was done prior to COVID. And when you go through it, you'll see that students have a warning, they're suspended one to three days, then three to five, then another three to five. And during that, we have an MTSS meeting or an IPST. We go through and make sure we're meeting kids' needs, review their BIP, and review that if necessary. And then after that, they are suspended up to 10 days. But I do want to clarify one thing, that just because it says that there's warnings, that does not mean that based on the fence, that's what students get. If a student does something like cuss at a teacher, they're absolutely not getting a warning. They're absolutely being suspended. But this was basically the setup of the way it was developed, of just making sure we meet students' needs. And again, this was done pre-COVID. When you look at the example process, it's set up exactly like the drug diversion, where students, Level II referrals are processed, they're going to get, they get one Level I or one Level II, they get two times. The first offense, they're going to be suspended for five days, the second one, they'd be expelled. Students that receive Level III, IV, or V, they're automatically placed up for expulsion. And the levels I did place in your packet as well, in the very back.
I do want to just add that all expulsions will come through the office, go through Student Services, Dr. Mandell, you know, to be vetted and make sure that we're moving in the appropriate direction. So I don't want anyone to think the school just gets to say, "Hey, here it is, you know, students being expelled." It does get vetted through Student Services, through my department, and then through Dr. Mandell's office.
And I just want to add that at the ALC, we're obviously still going to work to meet students' needs and to make sure we are setting them up for success.
So we'd be looking for the same thing here, thoughts and guidance of board direction regarding the current stipulation agreement versus example one that was provided, and then implementation timeline that you guys believe would be most appropriate for Brevard Public Schools.
Well, who wants to...
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I don't mind. Same question, as far as, is this one more complicated, having the multiple stipulation agreements going on at the same time than the drug diversion? Because you've got kids year, half a year, I mean, I know we're, at some point, we're going to have an overlap. And we can't go back and necessarily, and rewrite stipulation agreements. I mean, the parents would have to agree to that, because of what they signed, you know, what they, we have to stick to what they previously signed. But any thoughts? I mean, I love your open feedback on that.
I spoke to my administrators at the ALC to get their feedback and the teachers. And regardless, whatever date, we are going to have them overlap, and there is no issue. It'll be a board decision on which way you would like to go.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and finish off then. Sorry, I know that I've expressed to Mr. Raymer my concern about seeing expulsions in our agendas, that I've seen kids are doing things again. I'm like, why are, why are they still there? So I think we probably need to go ahead and implement it.
Starting, sorry, when?
In January.
January, okay. All right, I'll go next, if that's okay?
Sure.
Sure, okay. All right, yes, absolutely. Start this today. If we could get away with it, I would say start it today. Here's my issue. These students in secondary, which is the bulk of the population that is in our Alternative Learning Center, are only there for two days. This is their second chance that they are getting instead of being expelled. So I express this to you, Mr. Raymer. I think the general public believes the term expulsion means removed from our school system. We kind of use, like, "Hey, I'm expelled, I'm going to the ALC." You're not expelled, because it's different. It's in lieu of, right? So I think we need to be very clear in what we're saying, so that our definitions aren't changing for the community. Yes, absolutely. Start this January. This is their second chance, and they should honestly take advantage of it. And if they don't, then there's consequences that will be had from that. So I'm in favor of starting it right away.
Yep, no brainer. Move forward.
Same, same. January, thank you for making the changes already. I don't think we're done with ALCs, but this is a good, a good step.
No, we continue the conversation. Obviously, when we talked, at the end of last year, we talked about going back to five days a week if due on class size, and we'll continue discussions about other potential options for the Alternative Learning Centers to enhance that aspect.
Thank you.
Going back to the first slide that you gave us, when you're looking at other districts, especially like Osceola and Seminole that are really close to our size, I think, in fact, I think one of them is right ahead of us and one is right behind us when it comes to student population. When you, if you've taken a look at what they're doing, do you feel like there are things that are good that we can learn from, or that it's just, I'm trying to be careful, different, or a reporting thing, or they're just putting up with stuff, just to be quite honest? I mean, what, do you have a take on that when we compare? Because it's not that there's, except for maybe Seminole, but Osceola's population is not, you know, I wouldn't say, oh, well, I would expect better behavior in Osceola. I would think we were right next to each other. We share a lot of characteristics.
Some counties do have students do online instruction
Okay.
in lieu of expulsion. And some don't necessarily send them to an alternative placement. They may go to a different site, but it's not considered an alternative placement. So there's a variety of things that they do, but those two were the, when I spoke to the districts, that they do.
Okay.
So instead of a student being expelled, they would put them in online instruction, and the ALC, or wherever they were, would currently keep moving in their academics. They just would not come on campus.
Right. So then they don't have to report them to the state as alternative education placement setting, or as expulsion?
If they're not, if they're not expelled, then they're not...
There's other, there's other variables also, besides what she was saying. There's also the student composition, the type of students that are in there, whether they're low socioeconomic, Title I, other areas that we find that's consistent throughout the state that have more disciplinary problems are consistent with those districts, too, if you look at the makeup of them. So just saying that they have 73, because I ran through and put them all down here. Like, Osceola has 73,000 kids. To say that they're exactly the same as us is, you know, wide variety of issues and demographics and other things that come into play. So with that, just wanted to kind of help.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, what I'm seeing is they have fewer, they have lower numbers. So I'm trying to figure out how they, how they have those lower numbers.
Right. Yeah, so some of it's coding, or placement, I should say, or how a school, our alternative sites are set up as alternative sites, not necessarily as school-based sites. So there's something there, and then there's, you know, steps along the way, potentially, where you could do an online instruction piece or something of that nature in lieu of actually following through with the full expulsion.
Right.
So that's why we would potentially see some of the different numbers. And these were the counties, we just pulled these counties because they just bought up against Brevard. So we figured that they would be the most relevant to us regarding our knowledge base of those counties as opposed to others throughout the state.
I appreciate that. And I am not opposed, because we do have a barrier with using virtual school. I'm not opposed to us exploring avenues of allowing people to access some kind of virtual school, clearly not having access personal with any students or staff, especially if it's a violent offender. But I'm interested in us opening up opportunities if there's proven record, not to, not to fix our numbers, but to make sure that students can keep moving forward, because I do think, I mean, education is the game changer, right?
Yep.
And if we have students who are caught up in drug situations, and we can keep them moving forward, so hopefully they can come back and be better, because, you know, after they get expelled, they're going to come back. Are they, if they're, are they going to be in our schools longer because they didn't do any, didn't have access to anything? And so then they are going to be in our schools till they're 19-plus or drop out, whatever? Looks like some of their schools are maybe successfully doing. I only want to know if it's successful, though.
Yeah, right.
But if there's options, just under certain cases, you know, us not allowing students to do Brevard Virtual drives them to sort of virtual sometimes, and sometimes they don't even allow that, so, depending on the fence. So if there's an opportunity that looks reasonable, I'd be interested in hearing it in the future.
Yeah, so Misty and I have, I don't want to say pursued, we have reviewed, is a better word there, potential options that we could have as a district regarding students who are placed up for full expulsion. So we'll continue that conversation and then propose some potential ideas that could come that way. As you said, education is a game changer, and we want to keep students continuing with education and engaged in the school, or at least engaged in academics. So when they do return to the school, they're not a semester behind their cohort, or a year behind their cohort, that they're still on pace for graduation. And sometimes when they're not on pace, the behavior escalates at that point, just because there's, there's no other, you know, they don't feel a way out, because they're behind their cohort or behind the graduation side of the house. So we will continue those conversations to look at options that could be available.
Thank you.
Great, great. I think you can get that from our board here. We're very open to ideas.
Yep.
I mean, because we know, these are vulnerable students. I mean, we need to do what's best for them, look at the other districts. I think you're doing a great job at that. And like I said before, I think we're going to be continuing these conversations in the near future. I appreciate this so far.
Perfect. So we will move forward with those two stipulation agreements and implementation in January. The next item that we wanted to talk about was based off of our drug diversion discussion that we had at the end of last year, which were students that are recommended for ALC multiple times. And there was discussion on policies, procedures behind that. So we did pull what our current district discipline manual states, which is that we may withhold the Alternative Learning Center. However, we do not execute that, I would say, very often. So we also, we did the same thing here. We put our current process that's in the discipline manual, and then an example of what we could move towards. And the example is grade bands, K through sixth and seventh through 12th, and students being permitted to attend the ALC one time in each of those grade bands. And then the second time, we would look at the other side of expulsion. So I know through our one-on-one discussions, there were some different concerns there. So wanted to open that up for board direction on if we want to revamp the language that's in our current process, or if we want to in our current process or if we want to move towards keeping it the same.
Board?
I'll go last.
Okay, I'll go first, I'll jump in. What would be helpful to me is if you were able to provide us with how many students have actually had multiple placements in the ALC through K through 12? I mean, I don't, you can break it up if you want to, K through six versus the seventh through 12. Just so I know, how many students are we talking about? Are there multiple repeat offenders that we have that are at the ALC year after year after year? Yes?
It's approximately 140-something students. I don't have the number, but I can get that to you.
Okay.
But I know the number is about 140 students that have been a repeater at one time.
Okay, all right. So my, my recommendation would be absolutely to break it up. I express this to you, Mr. Raymer, when we talked, is that I, I think the K through six, because you're talking about such younger children, and a lot of times this is their first exposure to education or in a controlled setting, maybe a little more grace there. So maybe two times because, again, more years. And then maybe once in the seventh through eighth, which is traditional middle school, and once in the ninth through 12. So being a maximum potential of four times if they were to be, and that's a lot, that's a lot of grace given, that would be my recommendation on it. But I don't, I don't know what the board's appetite is for this. So I'll turn it over. Somebody else want to jump in?
Yeah, I, I actually was thinking along those same lines. Having been a middle school teacher for seven years, there's books written about middle schoolers' brains. And I, that is why the seven, 12 grade band is the one that I, is the one that I hesitate just a little bit, just because it is a new start, unless you're in a junior, senior, it's a, it's a new start in a new school. And I have seen so many students who in eighth grade were just, you know, knuckleheads, you know? And then they got to ninth grade and something happened and all of a sudden they're, they're more mature. Now, doesn't mean there couldn't be another mistake, but if we say, yeah, but then again, I mean, I hesitate because everybody's got a different offense in their mind. If we're talking about a violent student, but then there's, but there's other things on here that aren't that, right? We're not, so I, I just hesitate with the grade bands being so broad for the secondary because that's where we are getting most of our students and because those frontal lobes and the development, I think I would like an additional grade band in there. And even if it's six through nine or six through eight or, you know, seven through nine, I mean, whatever it is, I think we just, it would be good to have one more grade band in there.
Susan?
Grade bands, support it. Would like to move forward.
Yeah. I guess I'm left. Uh, yeah, so, I mean, we're talking about an expellable offense, not, not necessarily a mistake. So I, I'm very much like Mr. Susan there, I mean, K six, one time to commit it, because it's not like you're the model student and then, well, you just committed an expellable offense. It's those students that have, that probably have had multiple situations happen and then it becomes, yeah, an expellable offense. And then if we're able to give them multiple, multiple, multiple trips to the ALC, I don't, I don't know personally, I don't think we're doing what we're supposed to be doing of going back to the consequence. Seven, 12, I completely understand that. At many of our schools, that's high school. And to have someone to go to the ALC multiple times while they're in a, in a high school setting, again, I, to the public, I don't believe we're, we're doing what's best for students. I mean, that, that matters up there. I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're doing that. Because there's plenty of opportunity before it becomes an expellable offense in many cases, obviously. So again, having worked at the ALC and seen, you know, here's, here's Johnny for the fourth year in a row and second semester, he or she is back again. Consequences will curb behavior. We're not talking about removing kids and expelling them out as soon as possible, but if we see, if the students see, and you can't pull, pull anything over on, on kids, they're smart. If they, they understand, I can't do that again, that message gets through. But to hear up to four times, to go to the maximum, that, that is worrisome. So I would agree, the two bands are probably one too many, but I'll, I'll take the two. And I, I hope we can continue to discuss this.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in for just one second?
Yes.
Because I, I misunderstood something. So level, or a level three is not, there's not a recommendation for placement on level three. It has to be four or above, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is just our secondary on here, so I don't, unless, did you give us the elementary? Okay, so I'm just, to look at what the offenses are on, on level four, I'm going to retract what I said and actually agree with you, Mr. Trent, because the offenses are pretty serious offenses. This is not, I said a bad word or, you know, I, they're pretty serious, they're very serious, actually. Is it possible to look at the elementary? I don't, I don't have that up in front of me right now. What are the offenses for level four? Are they the exact same, do they mirror this or no?
It's really close.
Yeah, it's close.
It's close.
For four and five, it's almost identical.
Mm-hmm.
The cessers are identical.
Cessers, right, cesser, cesser.
And almost all of these are, almost all of these are cesser, except for classroom disruption, major, chronic misconduct. We do have their chronic misconduct, but I'm, that's, that's not necessarily straight to the ALC. ALC is an option on a level four, right?
Correct.
And to prove chronic disruption is...
Well, harassment, that's like one really...
Here, here's the thing to consider, I just, you know, here's why, again, I don't actually have a problem with the kindergarten, sixth grade one, it's just that secondary one. Because, again, think of, think about different thing, if a kid gets in a fight, that's a cesser fight, and gets sent to the ALC in middle school, and then we're saying, if they get into high school and they get involved in a wrong crowd and they show up with a vape pen that has THC oil in it, then forevermore, they're, they're done. They can't do the drug diversion program, they can't do the ALC. That's, so I, I'm just thinking about different things. I mean, and if we, if we have a middle school, high school grade band, let's say they got involved in a fight in middle school and high school, they do have an opportunity to pursue, you know, to have a second chance for that, for a different offense. But what we're saying is if they went to the ALC, if with just the two grade bands, as it's written, they go to the ALC in middle school and they get involved in secondary, you know, in high school, it's, it's, there are no other options. They are going to be expelled right away, with the exception of it's got to run through your office and make sure everybody handled it correctly, right?
Well, except the drug diversion, students would be allowed, so if you're saying the second offense was drugs, if they've never been caught, they would be able to do the drug diversion
Okay.
at their school.
Okay.
If they haven't used that option yet.
So the second time, okay, because they wouldn't be going to the ALC
Yes.
for that?
Right, so they're, with the introduction of the drug diversion program, I, I think that even makes more sense to limit the number of ALCs because the drug diversion program is actually an extra strike. So I mean, we're playing in the league where you get four strikes, so I mean, it's different.
So what you're recommending is they get one chance in K through six and one chance in seven through 12, right?
Right, I mean, the experts, that's what their recommendation was and I'm, I'm all for that.
Okay. Listen, I, as somebody who has graduated from Brevard County Public Schools, I think I'm the only one sitting here that has graduated from our schools, and we used to know back in the day, we did not fight in school. You did not do these things because if you did, there was a hefty punishment that came along with it. And we've kind of gotten away from that with leniency on, on tolerating some of these things. So if that's, I mean, if that's what it takes to get our schools back to a place where we don't have kids that are acting out in such a way that's dangerous to our staff, to our other students, then I would be in favor of it, so.
We will follow the current process through the remainder of this year and then the new process would be within the discipline manual for the start of next year, if that's okay with everybody.
And I think it's also good to remind everybody that this is supported by a lot of the principals and a lot of the teachers and stuff like that. That's something that I'm not sure if you guys talked about, but this move is very supported by our teams, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I believe that was, thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Susan, that was one of my questions in the one-on-one as well. You, Mr. Raymer is ex-building principal, what are, what are you hearing? And that's exactly what I heard. And we have to take that into consideration as well, so we appreciate it.
That's what I thought, but I missed reading.
Last thing I just wanted to ask, because I know Ms. Wright had touched on it, so our offenses are expellable offense that we hold in abeyance at the ALC, right? And I know that there's been some communication expressed to me that there's confusion with that, they, you know, we have an expulsion hearing, but then we put them, put the student or replace the student, I should say, at ALC. And if they do something there that they shouldn't have done, then we expel them. So there was a discussion or some communication on, there's a little bit of confusion there, maybe in the general public, and that, you know, placement at ALC should simply be called placement at ALC and expulsion should be called expulsion. Do we want to investigate separating those two or continue with, that's an expulsion offense where we will hold in, in abeyance at ALC? And then if you do what you're supposed to do, behavior-wise, grade-wise at ALC, then you return to the public school that you are zoned to attend.
So you're just talking about relabeling what we're already doing?
Well, it's...
I mean, I know amongst, amongst us, we use the term expelled, expelled.
Yes.
You know, I mean, if we eliminate the expelled, expelled, you know, that, which those are the, that is, that is what we say, right?
Expelled, expelled.
I know.
Just, just a question, I know that there's varying opinions on that, but Ms. Wright said it a little bit earlier in the presentation about a little bit of the confusion of, you know, we tell a student or a family, you know, that they're expelled and then they get actual placement at ALC, so they're not actually expelled, they're getting the academic setting at ALC. And if they do something at ALC, then they get expelled, 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 right? So that's, that's where that would come in. So there was a little bit of discussion there. We are perfectly fine with continuing with the terminology and language that we use, that schools are using. We can, you know, coach the, the schools and the administrators up a little bit more on, on communication and the language side of making sure that it's articulated appropriately, if that will suffice in trying to curb the confusion.
Well, if I could speak for just a second.
Go ahead.
I kind of know where we were headed it. So when a student commits an expellable offense currently, a parent could deny or refuse ALC, correct?
Correct.
So what happens to the student? They get expelled, right?
If they don't agree.
Not necessarily. So students now, when they're placed up for an expellable offense, they automatically go to the ALC.
So it's an honor.
And at that time, they can choose to do home instruction, that's, that's, so we're not letting students fall for the cracks.
Correct.
And then at that time, they can choose a different option.
So if a parent doesn't choose those options, I mean, we're, we're giving them that option to the ALCs, right? So they're expelled from our public school setting and are going to an alternative learning center. So they, to me personally, that they committed the expellable offense, this is the process of being expelled. It doesn't necessarily mean without education, we're going to give them that chance of the ALC. But if they choose to do none of those, I, I believe it would, it would continue into
Absolutely.
the expulsion. So to remove that word, expel or an expulsion or an expellable offense, I, I think would be also misleading because they have committed that offense.
And we have it pre- expulsion hearings and expulsion hearings. I mean, just to kind of mince words, I mean, I, I don't mind continuing to use the term expelled, expelled for us, you know, if we need to.
Because we may need that later.
Right.
Yeah, so what, what we'll do is...
That's so silly, but, let me just jump in for just a second, because I'm just going, oh my gosh, wait, you're expelled, but you're at the ALC, so you're not really expelled, you're actually still in Brevard. You're not expelled, you, you have alternative placement. So I, I mean, I think it's fine to say you committed an expellable offense, but let's not call it an expulsion, because an expulsion means you are removed from our school system. And I think the general public believes that. I think they would be alarmed if we were saying, we're expelling kids, we're expelling kids, but actually, we're not, they're, they're going to the ALC, they're not expelled. They're, it doesn't show up on their educational record. So it's not an expulsion. Like, we're changing the definition of the word expelled.
It doesn't show, if they complete, if they complete it.
Because they committed the expellable offense, but they're not truly expelled, you're right.
They're not.
So, I mean, it could be better communication in that admin hearing or in that, you know, hearing that's held at the school where it's broken down more like you just said, so we could, when we meet with deans once a month, with Student Services, Justin Armstrong holds that monthly meeting, we could work through different communication. Keep everything the same, but we're going to communicate it differently to make sure everybody understands the difference between the two, and what we're doing right now versus what could happen in the future based on behavior, grades, attendance, et cetera.
Yeah, we used to, we used to just call it removed or expelled from the regular program. And the Alternative Learning Centers actually used to be called the Abeyance Centers because we were holding the expulsion in abeyance. Which means it was still there and if you didn't successfully navigate your time at the Alternative Learning Center or the Abeyance Center, then the expulsion was still in, in, in play. And so, you know, I, I, I think it's just a better job of us explaining the process when we're involved in the process. And you've committed an expellable offense, but rather than expel you from school entirely, we're going to give you the option of enrolling in this alternative school and hold your expulsion in abeyance, we might start using that term again, while you complete your school at the Alternative Learning Center.
Here's something that's come up in my realm here, the ESE side of things. Principals are saying, do virtual school in lieu of the ALC. I don't know that they're contemplating the ESE implications. They still have to provide those services. So when they're in our ALC facility, that's easier because we have the staff on site. I don't think they're contemplating the staffing issue for those ESE services when they're on virtual school, so they might be trying to maybe get parents to jump on the virtual school a little bit more. So I think we need a better job of educating principals on, hey, remember, you have to make sure you're providing these services if you're putting them on virtual school. If you don't have the capacity because you've already got 20 kids on virtual school, maybe that's not an option for those kids anymore. So they have to start considering those options.
Yeah, we can do that.
And then also, when does the board get involved? Like, if they go to full-blown hearing, they render an opinion on expulsion, are they allowed to go to the ALC?
I mean, currently, right now, students that do take it to the board, they are allowed to attend the ALC.
During that time.
Right.
Until the board...
What if they render an opinion of, hey, nope, you did this, we're agreeing with the superintendent's recommendation? Are they still allowed to go to the ALC?
No, so when we go through an expulsion hearing and a three-panel board, is what we're saying, and they, you know, give their recommendation of how we're moving forward and if the recommendation is to, you know, uphold that, then that's what we uphold, you know, based on that recommendation.
So they're doing the expelled, expelled version if they go to that hearing? I just want to make sure everybody understands that, because it, that's a, this is a big, it's a big undertaking to get the board members and we have costs associated with that. So if they go through that process, the board may want that to be clear, that you are out if you go through our process. The superintendent has the authority to simply place them, so I think that's better for the stipulation side of the house.
I'm thinking about some expulsion hearings we've had in the past where parents, the result of the recommendation was, we said, no, we uphold the superintendent's recommendation for you to go to the ALC. They wanted to not be expelled at all or not be, not have that sentence.
Yeah, they can challenge the discipline imposed, like this isn't a level four or the discipline was too severe than...
So I don't think that, this changes that, right?
Right, yeah, if the recommendation is there, that's fine, but if the recommendation is expulsion, we should not be allowing students to still go to ALC if they're undertaking this.
Yeah, so the board will, could recommend the superintendent's or uphold the superintendent's recommendation, in which we would then follow that, which may be, you know, they would continue or be at the ALC or recommend if the board, if the superintendent recommended expulsion and they uphold, and that's the direction we would go.
Right.
I have no further questions. Any board members? We're good?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we've been at this for a little over 90 minutes, and so if you want to take a short break.
Yes, please.
All right. We'll recess for five minutes.
Good job.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, sir.[540.04]
Apartment. And one of the challenges in affordable housing in today's world is construction pricing. So I was just telling Sue, we're breaking ground on a ground up facility in January, and we have built exact same building footprint four times over now. The first one was in 2014. That property project cost us $124,000 a unit to build. This one we're breaking ground on next month is $300,000 per unit to build. So more than double the price over the past 10 years. So inflation is real. But that also impacts market rate housing, right? And so you cannot afford to build ground up apartment projects and deliver it at what would be considered an affordable or workforce housing price in today's market. So for us, this is a market based solution to affordable housing. We do not use government subsidies. We do not use tax credits. This is all private funding, private lending to convert these properties into a workforce and an affordable product. So here in the Melbourne property, we'll have 245 units with our rental rates ranging from what is defined as Florida housing and US HUD as area median income. So typically, the affordable housing rate is considered 80% of median income. And the rent in Brevard County published this year is 1324 per month at the 80% of AMI. All of our apartments right now have been underwritten under that. Our lowest underwriting is about 1,225 a month. And what's unique to our property type, and I'll get a little bit more into this, is that we provide an all inclusive rent. So that's, it's a one stop shop. We include all utilities, cable, internet, water sewer, and we also do a valley trash service. So six nights a week, you leave your trash can outside of your apartment door. Someone comes around during the night, they take your trash away. And what we've actually found is it really helps us keep the property clean. But our residents see it as a huge benefit, and they kind of see it as a luxury add on to the property. We redevelop with the same Class A finishes that we use in all of our ground up facilities, stainless steel appliances, solid surface countertops, provide the same amenities. We have fitness center, onsite management, pool, onsite laundry, everything that you would expect to see. And really, the only thing that differs here is the size of your apartment. So this is an interesting stat. In the US, every year, we develop more three car garages than we do studio or one bedroom apartments. And so when you look at the majority of your ground up multifamily, the majority of your unit mix is typically a two bedroom with some mix of one bedroom studios and three bedrooms on the larger size. And so when you get into affordability, you either have to have a roommate in a two bedroom unit, or you look for smaller housing, or you look for more rural housing, which leads to a much longer commute. And so another interesting stat is that the lower the income strata, the larger the percentage of their income a person spends on transportation, and that's typically due to longer commute times. So those folks can't afford to live closer to their jobs, so they spend much more time in the car. In this trade area specifically, on 192, over 40,000 daytime employees commute into that area every single day for their jobs. A lot of retail jobs, everything from Target to Walmart to restaurants, Starbucks, et cetera. And so there's a ton of daytime population there, but not enough affordable housing or attainable housing to support that local workforce. So again, I've already talked about the cost to construct. So we've looked a lot at national studies on why these smaller units make sense. And 73% of all apartment dwellers that were surveyed nationwide have said that they would look at a micro or studio unit just in exchange for smaller rent as a way to save money. And 97% of those renters said the primary decision maker was based on location. So they're truly looking for proximity to their jobs. So these are some photos of a project that we actually just opened about two months ago in Charleston, South Carolina. And I'll say, we currently have the same business model operational. We have one in Columbia, South Carolina, one in Charleston. We have two in Osceola County with a third under construction. We just closed on this property, and we have one under construction right now in Naples. So a total portfolio of about 1,600 units. So very similar to the property that we just purchased, two story hotel, full renovation. We added a brand new pool here, outdoor living space. So these are some photos of the interior of the unit. Again, stainless steel appliances, soft closed cabinetry, solid surface countertops, tile backsplashes. And then into the amenities, a full fitness center, onsite laundry. And so because our units are so small, we don't do laundry in the unit, right? But we do a technology feature on our washers and dryers that actually allow people to pay via Apple Pay as well. So you're not having to walk around with rolls of quarters. So it's much more modern and user friendly. We do clubhouse space. We do shared dining rooms that you can reserve if you want to throw a birthday party, things like that. So when we look at our current operational communities, 94% of our residents are single person occupants, one person lives there. 50% of our residents are in hospitality, food, beverage, tourism. But then you get into some of the other areas, and we actually have 5% of our resident base works for local government or for education. And I think this group will think this is interesting. In our community in Columbia, South Carolina, one of our residents is a retired school music teacher. She has three things in her apartment. She has a king sized bed, a two person dining table, and a baby grand piano.
Priorities.
But you know, it's really interesting how people choose to live in this space, right? And for someone that's retired and on a fixed income, your water bill doesn't fluctuate, your electric bill doesn't fluctuate, you know exactly what you're paying every single month. So across our entire portfolio right now, we have two minors under the age of 18. And so this is not a property type that generates a lot of students. One of the other things that is important to point out is under HUD fair housing laws, we are allowed to restrict our occupancy of our apartments to two residents per unit. And so in no situation do you end up with a couple and a child living there. You may end up have a single parent with their child, but across the board, we always restrict occupancy. And that's to preserve the quality of the community. We don't want overcrowding. And so these are super small square footages, and we want people to be comfortable in their homes and not overcrowd. Okay, so Brevard County specifically. So when we look at that 80% of AMI level, we pulled data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics on local employment data, which is done by individual employment category and offers annual salaries within each of those employment categories. So we looked at what a bed, one bedroom rent would be on the 80% of AMI mark for HUD and compared that to local employment numbers. 59% of the county cannot afford on their own as a single person to pay for a one bedroom apartment. And so when you look at that same level at a studio, you get a little bit closer, right? You've got 48%. But when you look at our underwritten rents, 72% of the county would be able to afford that to live independently and on their own. So when you look at your starting teacher salaries that are making, you know, upper 40s, low 50s, when you look at teachers assistants that are making, you know, the $17, $18 an hour mark, to qualify for our units, I want to say the number is 1780 an hour is what a person would need to make to qualify. And so that is typically much lower than what you're seeing on any market rate housing out there today. Okay, so as Sue mentioned, Brevard County allows for an alternative fee study. Currently, the impact fees do not differentiate between the type of apartment, only the type of development as a whole. So there's a single family residence category, there's a multifamily residence category. But within that multifamily, there is no distinction between one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom. So when you look at the number of people that live in an apartment, so on the left is our studio with a limited occupancy of two people. On the right is your traditional three bedroom garden style apartment that would allow six people. And it's five times the size, but across the impact fee category, the impact fee is the exact same for all of those units. So across the state, there are a little under a dozen municipalities that actually do differentiate by unit size. Typically, they look at the square footage of the unit. With Broward County looking at one bedroom or less, and Osceola County is actually in the process of adopting a studio or zero bedroom category. So there is some precedence across the state to allow for a separate impact fee for the smaller square footages. So there have been a couple of previous studies. Some were independent to us, two we were involved in. But in, three have been done over the past four years in Osceola County. And we recently completed one in Collier County for our Naples project that shows a substantially lower student generation rate for the square footages that we're talking about compared to traditional multifamily. So if you kind of blend the student generation rates across these studies, it would show that our 245 unit property would generate somewhere between one and seven students. The current impact fee suggests that we would have 27 students. And so again, across our entire portfolio right now, we only have two students living in our communities. And so the rate of 27 is extremely high compared to what the data both suggests and what we're seeing in the real world. And so the example that I kind of use is if you go to McDonald's and you order a cheeseburger, you don't pay for a Big Mac, right? You pay for the cheeseburger. And so our request to this group would be to allow us to go out and complete a study and actually pay for the impact that our community will have on the school system. So again, what we would like to do is go out, complete an independent study, bring it back, have our consultant present the data to this group, and then have you guys kind of weigh in on that and potentially make a recommendation to the county manager.
All right, board.
I'm going to go ahead and go because I have a couple of questions. So I just want to, I was the one who asked the questions before.
Sure.
Few things. So you stated that HUD will allow you to limit the occupancy.
Correct.
If you didn't understand, you will limit the occupancy.
We will. Let me, yes, we will. And we do.
And the current occupancy will be two per unit?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So this is live local, so 40% of them have to fall in that AMI, correct?
Yeah, so let me clarify that. Yeah, so under live local, that's our requirement, but the requirement is actually 120% of AMI for live local.
Okay, right. For the higher rent.
Yeah, and so it's higher, right? And so our, there is a market rate that we can charge for the square footage. And what we have typically found is that market rate is under the 80% of AMI mark. And so we underwrite to that number or below, because there's a point in time where a person would rather go get a two bedroom with a roommate, right? But it's a market based rent. And so we reference the 80% mark, but under live local, it's actually much higher is our requirement.
Okay, all right, wonderful. And what is the current occupancy that you have under your entire portfolio? It sounds like some of these are newer projects, is that right?
Yeah.
So what, have you sold, or what's your occupancy rate looking like as an overall in the portfolio?
So the one in Charleston is, it just opened, it's in lease up. Ours in Columbia, we have stayed 97% occupied since the day we opened, and that one's been open since 2019. In Osceola, we have two properties that have been opened since, one opened in December of '21, and the other opened in March, April of '22, and those have been between 90 and 96% fluctuate. Yeah, so I mean, it's, I mean, it is a sought after product.
All right, wonderful. Well, I love the fact that, you know, obviously not taking any kind of government funding, I believe that that's obviously a huge benefit. And I love the fact that you're renovating something that's there that maybe isn't being utilized or that it should be utilized. Is there any kind of stipulation that'll be set as far as the developer selling to a private entity later on that would maybe increase the occupancy allowed in that unit?
Yeah, so we are happy to enter into an agreement like that. We're absolutely happy to.
All right, just as far as the.
Yeah, and we can work with Sue. And we've done that in Osceola County as well, where we entered into an agreement with the school district that where if that ever changed, the district had the ability to come back and charge those added fees.
Okay, I would be favorable to that. I love the idea of this. Honestly, I think this is exactly what live local was created for, was to take these properties like this and turn them into something. What is, can I ask? No, I'm not going to ask.
Ask, ask, ask.
All right, what is the rate going to be, the rental rate going to be for the properties that aren't in that AMI percentage?
They're all, so here's the thing, they're all the same.
They're all the same.
Yeah, so right now, our underwritten rents, including utilities, range between 1225 and 1325 a month.
Okay.
And so the, and again, our live local requirement is 120% of AMI mark.
Right.
And I sent that to you, I believe. I think that the 100, it's like 1,700?
It's insane.
It is, right? It is. But so in Osceola right now, our, the AMI in Osceola for 80% is a little bit higher. It's like 1365. Our cheap, least expensive apartment.
Okay.
Is 1220, and I think our most expensive is 1390. And so we're right, we're right there within that range, yeah.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Well, I think this is, you know, tiny house nation has probably done a really good job for making studios a more attractive future for people. So yeah, but thank you for coming and presenting. I'm in favor of the study going forward and looking at, bringing it back to possibly finding a way to reduce some of the fees for you guys to be able to renovate that property.
Thank you. Great presentation. You just really hit all the marks as far as getting the good information to us. How does, because we've had a couple of different organizations come. One was specifically built with, as a nonprofit, whatever, and we had another one that was not necessarily. So I'm trying to figure out how you fall in, I mean, it's not like St. Stephen's Way, that was a different kind of thing, but how does this project fall in comparison to those other two projects? Sue would maybe be able to answer that one better.
So I'll start. I think there are different models of this. So the St. Stephen's Way project was one that was housing existing families with existing kids in the school system. So there was no net impact. So that was the basis of the agreement and the, it was basically an exemption agreement that was tri-party between the school district, the county, and the developer. We had another proposal that was looking for an exemption, but they were generating students, and we, I don't believe we ended up supporting that.
Yeah.
Right? And so from my perspective as a facilities person, if there are students, if there's a net increase in students, then I will be advocating for paying for that net increase in students.
Right.
Because if you recall, even the impact fee rate that has been adopted by Brevard County is substantially less than the actual cost of that impact. So the impact fees are only paying for a portion of what it costs to actually support additional students in our schools or in the school district in general. So there are a couple of different ways that you might see a proposal. In this particular case, the developer is proposing to pay for that impact, it's just the impact is predicted to be smaller.
Right. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure I could wrap my mind around, we did this, but then we did this and this, so that that makes perfect sense. I think, I agree with the, this is a great way to use, to follow the live local mindset because I'm trying to think, what are all the objections people are going to have? You know, people complain when we have new apartment complexes go up, but the truth is, people don't want to see these old properties sitting around because they don't get torn down, they sit there and they, and they look terrible.
And here's the reality, like, I've toured a lot of old defunct hotels, if I can just be candid, and at some point, people live in these regardless, right? I mean, that's the reality. And so by renovating it, by making it feel new again, we don't have a net impact on traffic. We don't have a net impact on utilities, right? Because it's been an operational, so this one was built in 1977. It's been impacting the road system since 1977, right? And so we've done traffic studies to understand, and we actually, our type of community has a net reduction over hotel use because it's less transient. And so as a whole, it is a much more sustainable way to look at these properties and to prevent them from becoming a nuisance to the local community.
Right, well, and I agree, that was one of the things I had, notes I had made, that a long commute is what affects traffic more. And that is the chief complaint when we have more people moving in is the extra traffic.
Right.
Minimalism is in vogue, for sure. So, and the other question, last question I had was, how does the underwriting work? Who's underwriting, or is it just, are you guys underwriting with your other projects that are, I'm not sure how that.
Yeah, so we do the underwriting, right? So this is our business model. And so what we have just learned across the portfolio is that the market can and will pay about the 80% of AMI mark for this product type. And so that has just kind of become our adopted underwriting.
Okay. Well, you know, every, when I look at the impact, you know, this kind of housing is needed absolutely for our employees, especially for these, those young teachers. And if they come from outside, there's not a parent they can live with until they get enough money, which could be years. I mean, if they're, if we're getting them from other places, and we do that quite frequently, it's really hard to find housing. And so I think this is a good use of this avenue and if the alternative fee. Now, you guys are already starting, so this won't necessarily help you with this project, will it, or if the timing?
Yeah, so the way that the impact fees are done in Brevard County is that the fees are paid at the certificate of occupancy. And so we have basically through construction to work out.
Okay, so we have some time, but potentially, would you be looking at other places in Brevard to replicate the model?
We're always looking.
Good. All right, that's all I had, thank you.
Susan?
So I wanted to say thank you. The particular property that you're working on, I know has been a nemesis to a lot of the area in that area, and it's been a lot of the leaders in that area, so thank you for coming forward with it. One of the questions I had, great presentation, way to lay it out, very easy to understand and go through. Paul, do we leave ourselves, and this isn't particular for you, but when we make decisions like these, whether we do or we do not support it, are we leaving ourselves open for risk, for lawsuits in the future if we decide to go the opposite in a similar situation?
Ultimately, this is a county thing, so whether the board supports or doesn't, the county can move forward. So it's their program. They just usually seek our input and what we recommend, and they may or may not take that.
But so it's their decision, so we don't leave ourselves open for risk?
Right, yeah, it's their program. So if they think that we've made a mistake in our recommendation, they would move forward if they think there's some legal basis that they have to move forward with allowing this.
Okay. I like the business model. I like it. Good job. I'm in favor.
All right, well, that's clear, you got a clear direction. We're open to the impact fee study. So appreciate it.
Awesome. All right. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Chair, the last presentation today is about Zero Eyes. And we are always looking to ways to improve the safety and security that we provide to our students and staff on campuses. Always looking for other layers of security that we can add. So Zero Eyes is a video monitoring system, and I'll let them explain what it is and everything, but it's just an additional tool that we are looking at. Today, we're just in presentation mode. We're not necessarily proposing this or anything like that, just a presentation for you to see the product, learn about the product and that kind of thing. And then, you know, we get direction today to move forward on considering it, you know, we would do that, but right now, today, it's just, this is an additional layer of security that we could add to our buildings, and we just wanted to give you the information and the presentation on it. So Mr. Wilson, the chief operating officer, is back at the table, and he's going to, you know, take over and also introduce Brett and the rest of the team.
We all set?
Looks like it's good.
Awesome. All right. Board, thank you so much for having us.
I'm going to introduce you, then you can roll in. In our ongoing efforts to enhance the safety and security of our schools, we are pleased to have with us Brett, Brent and JT from Zero Eyes. Zero Eyes specializes in using artificial intelligence to detect firearms and live security camera footage. Acting as an early warning system, it helps prevent potential active shooter situations by integrating with existing security cameras and alerting authorities when firearms are detected. Several schools in Florida are using this technology, just several school districts, excuse me, are using this technology within the state, just to name a few. Indian River County, Sumter County, Leon County, Hernando County, as well as Florida Atlantic University, Florida Southwestern College, the Villages Charter, Pembroke Primes Charter, and the Benjamin School, just to name a few of the organizations within the state that's using this technology. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Brent and JT to let them present what Zero Eyes has to offer. Brett?
Awesome, thank you. So Brett Muntell, Vice President of Education and Government Solutions. JT Wilkins here, he's the Senior Vice President at Zero Eyes.
Make sure you're on the mic.
I'm going to go into this one.
How's that? Is that good?
We can give you a handheld if you want.
This is good. I'm happy back here. So what I had planned to show you today is sort of a two part presentation. It's not going to be a sales pitch, it's going to be more of a tactical demonstration. You're going to go through a few slides, explain the technology, how it works, and then we'll go into a live demo and show you this thing in action here. So Zero Eyes itself, we have one mission, it's to stop, mitigate, prevent as much gun violence as possible. So we have the saying in the top left, save time, save lives. And really what we mean by that is the more time we can give back to first responders, law enforcement, school personnel, in the event of an active threat, the better chance you have of saving a life. So quick backstory, you know, the company itself, founded by a group of former Navy SEALs, special forces, special operations guys who went to serve after 9/11, you know, they come back, they get their Ivy League MBAs. And 2018 comes around, naturally, that's when the Parkland shooting happened, right? Tragic day across the nation. Seventeen people shot and killed, seventeen shot and injured, really a turning point for schools across the nation with their security measures. So you see more lockdown drills, reunification plans, or seeing metal detectors. Our CEO, his daughter was in middle school at the time, went through one of her first, you know, intense lockdown drills. And I think we all know how they go, people coming around, you know, banging on the doors. Daughter comes home upset, dad marches down to the school, talks to the principal, the resource officer, they explain the drill, makes perfect sense to him. He started looking at the cameras and asking, you know, what are you doing with your security cameras? When I was overseas, we could detect a drone, an enemy, a weapon, you know, virtually anything, might not do the same. And, you know, the feedback he got from his daughter's school and more and more schools was that, hey, cameras at schools are generally used for forensics. In other words, after there's a fight or a theft or an incident, you're going back and rolling the tapes. It's quite seldom you find a school district that has someone dedicated to monitoring every single one of their thousands of camera feeds in real time. So that's where the whole concept came from, you know, transforming what's ultimately a video recorder to a proactive gun detection system. So Zero Eyes itself, we're a US based company headquartered right outside Philadelphia. And what we are, we're an artificial intelligence computer vision software that layers on your existing security cameras to detect guns in real time. So really what differentiates Zero Eyes from any other weapon detection system on the market is our human in the loop element. It's what we refer to as the ZOC, which stands for Zero Eyes Operations Center. So if you think of a real time crime center, or a military command center, 911 dispatch, that's what we mimic our ZOC after. Again, staff 24/7, 365 by Zero Eyes employees. Everyone that works in the ZOC, you have to be either former military or former law enforcement, and we do this for a reason. These are individuals that aren't just trained and experienced at recognizing active threats, but they can also articulate what's going on in a calm demeanor. And, you know, quite frankly, it could be a high intensity situation, but really, the sole purpose of the ZOC is to verify every detection that our AI gets to make sure, hey, is this a true positive or is this a false positive? So if you get an alert from Zero Eyes at law enforcement level, education level, you know it's something that absolutely deserves attention because it's been human verified. So we are what I like to call camera agnostic. In other words, we integrate with your existing video camera infrastructure. We're all about making the most of your school district's existing security technology investment. So we layer on your cameras, the video management system, we can do access control, mass notification. We had extensive calls with your IT team and your CIO to confirm 100% compatibility with your Vercotta camera system. And, you know, that's good knowing that we work on all your existing cameras. And really, what the technology is doing here is providing arguably the two most critical pieces of information you could ask for in the event of an active threat, and that's time and situational awareness. So what I mean by that, you're going to know the exact location of the threat, what they look like, what type of weapon they have, and most importantly, how much time's elapsed since the threat was underneath each camera view. Did I do something to the mic?
No.
All right, moving forward. So to bring you through the workflow, top left, here's your existing security cameras. Now, we require that at least 0.1% or more of the firearm is in frame of the camera to get a detection. So in other words, it doesn't have to be fully brandish, it could just be part of the barrel or part of the handle. As soon as that happens, our system gets a detection and it sends a keyframe image to our operations center. So think of a keyframe image like a snapshot or a screenshot on your cell phone, it's a still frame image. Within three to five seconds, that ZOC analyst is either going to dispatch an alert, or they're going to mark it as a false positive. So when they click dispatch, several things happen concurrently. We have two phones that ring in the operations center. One's dialing our primary security point of contact at that school, the other's dialing the 911 dispatch center that covers that school's jurisdiction. So it's a live person on the phone telling you exactly what's going on. Concurrently, you have visual alerts sent out to the named users throughout the district, whether that's SROs, guardians, principals, board members, whoever it may be, and you get these alerts a variety of ways, through mobile app, through the desktop, through text message, and that's what's going to show you a map of your buildings with the pin drop whether that's SROs, guardians, principals, board members, whoever it may be. And you get these alerts a variety of ways, through mobile app, through the desktop, through text message. And that's what's gonna show you a map of your buildings with the pin drops showing a breadcrumb trail of how much time's elapsed since the threat was underneath each camera view and what their last known position was. So again, that situational awareness factor. Going forward, you know, we like to share this slide because we want to know we're trusted in this space. JT and I were some of the early employees with Zero Eyes. We're around 200 full-time employees now. We have those operations centers across the country. So our primaries, right outside Philadelphia, our secondary is in Hawaii. You know, we do that for geo and failover redundancy. In other words, it doesn't make sense to have someone monitoring for detections at, say, 3:00 AM local time on the East Coast, when it could be a much more reasonable hour of the day in our Pacific ZOC. So the company itself, we're over 80% veterans over here. And, you know, schools, K-12 districts, you guys care about privacy concerns too. So we're FERPA compliant as well as ED2D law compliant. So in other words, we are not watching a live feed of your school's security cameras. The only time we can see inside your camera is when our AI detects an object that it thinks is a gun. So there's no bias towards race, gender, ethnicity behavior. Again, the AI is looking for one thing and one thing only. Is this object a gun or is it not? Next to that is our Safety Act Designation. So we're the only video analytic weapon detection system that carries a Safety Act Designation from the Department of Homeland Security. So what that should mean to you is DHS can drop in on us. They could do pressure testing or stress testing on our technology anytime they want to make sure we're keeping up with our end of the bargain. So because we have the Safety Act Designation, we are now considered and classified as anti-domestic terrorism technology. So the system itself, we're deployed in over 450 school districts across 42 states. I think the only one I didn't hear earlier was Seminole County Public Schools. You know, our education clients in Florida, they pretty much raised their hand. If you want to speak with any of their, you know, security personnel, superintendents, board members, they're pretty much open to talking with anyone. So this was originally, you know, designed for schools. Naturally, we had to make a pivot when COVID hit because students weren't in the classroom. So we started working with commercial and government entities, and we've been extremely successful there. You can see Verizon, Home Depot, Subaru, Transwestern, you know, obviously a lot of NDAs in there and then some major government entities. But going forward, you know what? I'll go through the next one here. This is really like, this is what you have to consider that your security team's looking at in the event of an active threat. You know, it's gonna be pretty difficult to find where the gun is in this camera feed. So if you were to say, hey, we have someone dedicated to monitoring all the camera feeds, I'd challenge them, and I'd say, find the firearm. And we get all of our data from FBI, Department of Homeland Security, NationalGunViolence.org. They've looked at every school shooting since Columbine, so this is 20-plus years of data. And they've broken it down into a three-stage sequence, the prep, active, and response stage. And what the numbers show are staggering. Almost 80% of the time, there's been a school shooting, the gun's been brandished underneath one of the security cameras, anywhere from 30 seconds to 30 minutes before the first shot fired. And that's what's classified as the prep stage, you know. That could be the assailant mentally preparing themselves to go shoot unarmed civilians or their peers. It could also be them physically preparing themselves by assembling a long gun, pulling out of a backpack or the trunk of a car, approaching from a parking lot or sports field. You think about Parkland, obviously a sensitive topic, especially in the state of Florida. But he was underneath the stairwell camera with that, you know, long gun there, and it was brandished. He exits the stairwell, goes down the corridor, he was passed underneath several cameras before the first shot was fired. So obviously, a hypothetical scenario here, but who knows how many lives could have been saved that day if our technology was around at this point in time. So I'm gonna pass it over to JT. We're gonna walk through a couple of detections here and explain, you know, how our technology's been effective in the past.
All right, we've got it working there. So first off, thank you again for having us today. My name's JT Wilkins, Senior Vice President of Sales here at Zero Eyes. Been with the company for about three and a half years. I'm a Marine veteran. I spent 14 years on active duty. Medically retired in 2020, went downrange a number of times, fell in love with the mission of Zero Eyes, been here ever since. So what's important to note is Brett's talking about a lot of hypothetical situations. With the 450 clients that we have on the platform today, we've seen real-world arrests on the backside of this. This is one of the ones that we're looking at today. This was one of our transit clients in the Northeast. The individual, if you can kind of see, it's a little blurry on the screen here, but the individual was brandishing a firearm, pulled it out of his waistband, was sitting on the subway platform. This was a gun-free zone, was not supposed to have a firearm in this location. We saw that, we dispatched that to law enforcement within about four seconds. After that human verification process went through, the Transit Police Department interdicted that individual. And a few minutes after that, we resolved that information without further incident. In this case, the individual was heavily intoxicated, waving a firearm on the platform. We're not sure what he was doing, what his plans were, but at the end of the day, he had the firearm, he was intoxicated, and it was in a place he wasn't supposed to have them. So we have a few more here. All these are from 2023. So in your top left, this individual was in a municipal parking lot, brandishing an AR-style rifle. We dispatched this within about three seconds to local law enforcement. They interdicted this group of people. The guy had actually put the firearm away at this point. I guess he was just showing it to some folks, but was not supposed to, again, on government property, not supposed to have that firearm there. When the police department arrived, they showed them the dispatched alert that we sent them, very clearly showing it was this individual with this truck with this type of firearm. They found it, talked to the guy, and then, you know, they went along their way. In the top right, we're looking at an individual that was pacing around turnstiles, waiting for potentially someone to come through there to commit some type of act against that individual. Again, dispatched that within seconds. Transit police were there within a few minutes. This guy ran from the police department, ditched the gun, fought police. And then when he was interdicted, they later found out that this individual had multiple arrest warrants out for a battery of different crimes that this individual had committed. So he was arrested. Bottom left, we're looking at a, you can see on the bottom right there, the timestamp, 2:38 AM. A bunch of kids had broken into one of our schools, was walking around with a firearm. Again, dispatched that alert to local law enforcement. They interdicted them and were later arrested. And then bottom right, another incident of an individual brandishing a firearm in a public location, dispatched and was later interdicted by law enforcement. So what we're doing by showing you all these images is that this technology works. It's not, it's not security theater. It's something that we can in place today that would increase your security posture almost immediately. When you look at the cameras and the capital investment that you've made into your camera infrastructure and talking with the district, there's well over 5,000 individual camera streams. It's physically impossible to watch every single one of those, every single one of those camera streams. Every single school district that we talk to, every single entity that we talk to, they don't have the ability to look at these cameras. And so they become a forensic or a reactive tool on the backside. What we're trying to do here is make it proactive. What's important to note here is in this image, is the value of our operations center. So our software is designed to pick up brandished firearms. That doesn't matter if it's, you know, someone that's carrying it this lawfully. Once it becomes, comes out of that holster, we're gonna get that detection. So in this case, you can see uniformed police officers that have that weapon out. Now, this could have been an active shooter drill at one of our schools. We see that quite a bit. What's important to note is that that weapon was in the holster, kind of like the gentleman off to the back right there. We're not gonna get that detection. We don't train our software to detect holstered firearms. We're deployed everywhere, from Florida and Texas all the way up to Chicago. This isn't, you know, a partisan issue. This is a, this is a, we're trying to detect someone that is doing something harmful with a firearm in a place that they're not supposed to have that out. So we can have any one of the officers walk around this room right now with their holster firearms, we're not gonna get that detection. In the event that we do, the operations center are gonna very clearly see that those are uniformed officers, and we're gonna go a different dispatching route, or at least a different notification route and say, hey, we did see this, we want to let you know that the software is working, or at least that it's, you know, it's on and we saw the firearm. But we're not gonna send the cavalry in. What we know, never want to do is escalate a potential situation into something that it may not need to be. So last year, in February, I think everyone saw the news on the Michigan State University. Unfortunately, we just had another incident yesterday, and so we're fully aware of the impact of that on the Wisconsin community. But I wanted to show this video very quickly. So this is, again, the video of the Michigan State University shooter walking into the building that he walked into just shortly before he started firing on the individuals that were there. I want to make it very, very clear. Zero Eyes was not going to stop this shooting from happening. This happened within seconds. We're not a do-everything tool, we're a situational awareness platform. Our goal is to be able to give back time to law enforcement. So within the seconds after this image, this guy started shooting, there was nothing we can do. What we could have done, though, in this scenario, if we were deployed and got this detection, was reduce the three and a half hours of panic that had gone on in the greater Lansing area. There was, I believe, somewhere in the ballpark of 150 911 calls that came in over a seven and a half square mile radius. Roughly about 15 of those were shots fired calls, and they came in roughly five and a half square miles around where the shooting happened. The shooter ended up being found roughly three-quarters of a mile away from the building, and it took them 90 minutes to gain access to the video just to be able to figure out what was the description of the weapon and the shooter. So our value proposition in that scenario is, we're gonna give you, we're gonna give you this image in three to five seconds, roughly, and we're gonna get this out as fast as humanly possible, and we're gonna keep on sending you as much information to provide situational awareness through the life cycle of an active shooting, God forbid that ends up happening. So Brett, I'll hand it back to you for the rest of the presentation here.
Awesome. So I want to walk you through the user interface so you can see exactly what we're doing here. What you're looking at on this screen, this is our internal user interface. So in other words, this is what the Zero Eyes Operations Center is looking at the majority of the time. Again, they're staring at a blank screen, they're not watching a live feed of your cameras. Now, as soon as a firearm's detected, a loud nuclear alarm goes off in the ZOC. You know, something that's gonna get their attention. And you can see the bounding box, which is drawn around the object that it thinks is a firearm. So above this key frame image is the camera names. We're gonna match your school's camera naming convention or camera nomenclature, if you would. So you can see all these detections coming in on the right side from first to last. And I'll sort of click through this, you can see the different dispatched alerts here. It is as close to real time as it gets. Every step they're taking, different carry configurations, there's negative objects or what they call a lot of noise in the background, trying to trip up the AI. But what your takeaway should be is, you see them clicking dispatch here. As soon as they click that the first time, that's when the phones are ringing and the visual alerts are going out. So this is what it's gonna look like on the client-facing view. This is what would go to your desktop, to your mobile app. And what you're looking at here, these different pin drops represent your cameras that have Zero Eyes. So the greenish teal color pin drops with a zero underneath them, those are your cameras that have not detected a firearm yet. The purple and the white pin drops are your cameras that have detected a gun. And you see a timestamp below showing how much time's elapsed since the threat was underneath that camera view. So as I click play here, you can see, you know, minute 26 seconds from the northeast side of the building, a minute 21 seconds, then southwest, then back to the northeast side of the building. So you're essentially getting a breadcrumb trail, so you don't only know where they've been, but where they're going, and also that last known position. This white icon is just showing you the corresponding detection on the right side of the screen. So you know, from looking at this, a minute and 32 seconds ago, the threat was underneath this camera view doing this action. So that's really what I have for you for a slideshow here. Next, it's one thing to show a recording. Obviously, you can doctor up and do anything you need to do to make it look good, but it's another thing to see the analytic live in person. So we have a few fake firearms here, they're airsoft weapons with no ammunition in them or anything like that. I have a Linux machine right here that is acting as our server, which we would come on site and install. We get boots on the ground, we'll install the server, we'll test all your cameras for detections, we'll do hands-on training with your staff and law enforcement, because we very much run under the impression, hey, you have the best technology in the world, but, you know, what good is it if the people using it aren't effective? So that being said, I'm just gonna switch the video input over here, and I'll work with JT to show you some detections. Give me one second. Let me just switch the display mode here. Right here. All right. Sweet. So that red bounding box you see, that is showing you the detection. Every time you see that red box there, that's an alert, that's a key frame image that's going to the operations center. So again, this is just showing you how well the AI works. Something that's, another differentiator from us and other technologies is we use organic data sets to build our AI. So we have a Hollywood-style green screen lab at our headquarters, and we have a team of individuals that walk around with different firearms and different carry configurations, and they take tens of thousands of pictures of those individuals, and we load those 3D images into the AI. That's how we train the model with real, live data. So you can see JT's holding a pistol here, that's a black-on-black detection, right? Dark gun, dark shirt here, still getting the detection. So again, hopefully, this is something you never have to use, right? But in the event you do have to use it, you're damn happy you have something like this in place. One other thing I want to show you here, just before we wrap up, is I want to bring you through, you know, I talked about a few different ways we send alerts out. So I showed on the last screen the desktop view, but what you're looking at here, in the top left, probably what your live cameras look like today without any analytics running. Next to that are the mobile app alerts. So we'll send, the mobile app is simply just a condensed version of the desktop app. You can specify what users you want throughout the district to have access to this. The text message alerts. Now, the text alerts, they give you a little bit of higher-level information. There's such thing as over inundating schools with too much data. You want to make sure the right people have the right information. So what you get in the text alerts is the building name, the camera name, and the hyperlink to the key frame image. Now, something else that schools, especially because you have Vercata cameras, that, you know, they're one of the best cameras on the market, and they have tons of analytics. In the top right, that's our integration with the video management system. What Vercata calls Vercata Command Centers. We'll integrate into your video management system. And how that works is when we dispatch an alert, your camera feeds will actually pull up in real time, they'll populate to that live camera feed. And the reason we do that is say they stole the firearm away, or they ditched it into a bush, or back in a backpack or a trash can. This gives you the best chance of seeing what's going on in real time on your side from the camera views at each individual school level. So this is really, you know, in a nutshell, what we have for you for a presentation here. But we'd love to hear any feedback and answer any questions for the group.
Guys, I want to say thank you so much for, you know, putting forth the presentation that you have. And, you know, thank God there's innovative people such as yourselves and the people who came up with this. Ford, questions?
I echo, thank you for digging into the creative side of things and developing a product that is designed to keep us all safe and especially our students and staff. So my question would be, when you send the alert, it's still on our stat? You know, we have rave apps and things to lock things down. Your single alert is still on our side if we're in school session, obviously, after hours. I was really glad to see that it's continuing to work after hours because ours, you know, the sheriff's department oversees that even when we're not on campus. But it's still on our people to do the lockdowns, correct?
That's correct. So what we would never want to do is send an alert from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, or Honolulu, Hawaii, and lock down the school with a potential threat still inside.
Right.
So we're providing the information. We do have integrations with those type of access control platforms where we can send those alerts into the platform, and then it's a kind of a one-stop shop. It depends on what you have. But yeah, we're not gonna ever make that decision on your behalf. So we send those alerts out, it's kind of like à la carte. You get to choose where the alerts go to, so whether that's to the school resource team, the local public service answering point, you know, to the individual principal's superintendent's office, whatever that you'd like, that's how we can set those alerts up.
Right. And it's, I'm glad you were able to talk to the technology department because everybody has to integrate, to cooperate in order to make this, to take advantage of the quick response time, too. So that's all I have.
First off, thank you for your service to our country. I appreciate any of our military, that is the ultimate sacrifice. Ms. Campbell and I had the opportunity to go and actually tour Parkland that was frozen in time since that massacre took place. And nothing hits home quite like that. And really, understanding that security has to be of the top priority for our district. If we can't ensure your children are gonna go home every day, I don't want to have your children in our schools, and my own children are in our schools. So I feel very, very, very passionate about security measures. Wanted to ask us a couple of questions that you had, you know, what is the false alarm rate? What do you guys see on that? Is there like a, how many false alarms do you get in a school system? And I don't know if that's easy to answer or not. Like, does it happen frequently? Let's put it that way.
Yeah, so that's a, it's a good question, and we get it a lot. So no AI is perfect. So no AI is perfect, there's a lot of objects that look like firearms out there, and inevitably our system pulls false positives just like any else. The way that we mitigate those false positives is with our ZeroWise Operations Center. So the goal is that you would never receive a false positive here to, to the school district. We're going to, we're going to remove those from that, that sequence, so that human in the loop reviewer is going to zoom in, they're going to be able to determine gun or no gun, and then make the decision to either dispatch, or push that through our false positive process. And when we push that through our false positive process, the system's relearning. Now, it's not happening on the edge, we have a team dedicated to do that, but we're saying, no, that was, you know, during like the COVID days with the COVID sprayers, right? They have a pistol grip on them, and you, when you were walking around and you were disinfecting the building, because it has that pistol grip, we get that. We're deploying in Department of Defense installations. The, the scanner to scan the ID cards, that pulls a false positive, because it very much looks like a firearm. But we're very easily, easily, you know, able to tell that that's not a threat.
Okay. One of the other questions I had is that the software is created in a way to pick up the firearm itself. So in the event that somebody were to brandish a firearm, let's just say, and, and something goes down, and then they toss the firearm, and then they go mingle and get in the middle of a crowd, does the software detect that individual or stay with that? Is the capability there for them to track that individual? So the, the pinpoints that we see on there is tracking where the gun is going, right? But what happens if they set the gun down and they go somewhere else? Is there any way for that to happen?
Yeah, great question. So, short answer is no. We never want to start identifying people, especially children. We get, you get down a rabbit hole very, very quickly from a legality perspective and a, and a, and a privacy infringement perspective, when we start identifying individuals. So what we do is, is detect firearms and firearms only, we're very, very good at it. Because we have all the integrations that we have, and because of the, the improvement of your, your camera infrastructure, when we send those alerts into the monitoring dashboard, into the camera dashboard, or the video management system that Brett was walking you through up there, a lot of times what our clients will do is set that to like a 10-second delay, and then once that alert hits the platform, they can do the follow from that point off of that live camera. And that way, they're able to follow the individual, because you're getting the description of ultimately what the weapon that they're carrying. As a byproduct of that, we ultimately take a, a quick snapshot of the individual. Now, that person's back could be turned to us, because again, we're only looking for the firearm, but you still get a, a description of the individual that's carrying the firearm.
Okay.
And to that point, what you can do in Verkata, and one of the reasons it's a great camera, those analytics, you can walk onto a key person of interest or a key subject. So depending on what your licensing plan is with them, you could say, you know, white male with a red hat and jeans on, something like that. Or if you have that key frame image, you can draw a box around it, and it can locate it on your cameras. So I'm not sure if you have that feature in your Verkata system, but key object tracking's very popular for their analytics.
Okay. All right, I don't, I don't think I have any other questions. I mean, God willing, we never need this type of, of software. Honestly, I wish you lived in a utopian society where it wasn't necessary, but that's not the reality of the world that we're in. So I appreciate the work that you guys are doing to keep everyone safe. It looks like you're working with a multitude of different companies, and, you know, schools obviously is where our heart is, so I appreciate that being your initial initiative, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So I had a couple of quick questions. So, we ID the individual on the campus somewhere, it goes, the alert goes in, our team's alerted, then they act, they send in SROs to coordinate and everything else. So I'm an SRO on campus, this comes in, then all of a sudden, I hear, my team would coordinate those pops on the camera, right? So like, if all of a sudden the camera's over here on the backside of the building, they'll say, you know, room 109 or whatever it is, advance there, right? So that coordination and everything's on us, you guys are just alerting, right?
That, that's correct.
Okay, and then, it's in real time. So if we have a situation, what I'm hearing you say is, is that as they're popping around the building, our law enforcement would be able to coordinate with those pops. I'm saying identifications, right, to the location of the individual, is that about right? Because that's one of the things law enforcement runs into, is not knowing exactly where they're at. With our cameras, this will also not only pre-identify, but identify throughout an active situation. Is that about, am I thinking correctly?
Yeah, that, that's exactly right.
Because that's what I was watching inside that piece right there, was the numbers that were popping, and it shows like that? Is that all part of it?
In an ideal world, we get the alert, we're going to dispatch it through, and when we're on the phone with 911 Dispatch or SRO, whoever, they're getting, you know, the communications from ZeroWise, and they're regurgitating that to, you know, the other first responders through radio comms.
That's the question. So you guys are seeing it, is our team seeing that? Or is that your team seeing that? That's it? Okay, so our team sees it? That's it, thank you.
Yeah, so you're going to get, so kind of going back over this, so the bottom right there would be the, is the customer facing page, is the client facing page. So you're getting that mapping component. I think the state of Florida pushed the Critical Response Group mapping requirement across the entire state. We integrate with CRG maps, so that, those building plans, the mapping plans, they'll already be preloaded in the system. We work very closely with their, with their company. And in addition to that, you're getting the mobile app alert. So whoever's that incident commander onsite and is going through that process, would be the one that we ultimately want to have that mobile app. So they're still continuing to get those alerts while they're en route to, to that, that situation.
Got it.
And then, again, you know, that, that backup scenario is, is making the actual phone call.
Okay. So thank you, thank you for the time. That's all I needed.
Dr. Rendell, you have any questions on this?
I don't have any questions. Like I said, this was a presentation of the technology. We'll be following up with you individually for feedback, and to see if it's something we want to pursue as a district. I think, Mr. Wilson, anything else?
No, nothing else, just looking forward to continue to have these collaborations and moving forward to keep our campus safe.
So I, I do have to maybe chime in on a couple of things here, just maybe just one is, it sounds wonderful, right? But at what point, it's obviously not in the presentation, do we, do we talk about cost? It's not today then, I guess, right?
I'm guessing not, because someone looks across the table.
So the, the cost is, is based on the number of camera streams that the district, the district decides to move forward with. It's super scalable, I have preschools on our platform with three cameras, we have universities with 3,000. It just sort of depends on the scale at which you decide to move forward with, and then the decision on, you know, the budget that you look, you know, you want to move with this as well. So we, again, I think Seminole County, they have a few thousand cameras with us, Indian River County has roughly 1,500. So there's all sorts of different shapes and sizes that you can go with. It's really, you know, the determination within inside of your own environment to determine what makes the most sense for you, and we're happy to help you through that process.
Okay, so of, of the districts that you have currently, would we, where would we fit in? Are we the largest district that?
You would be one of the largest, yes. If you went with 100% of your coverage.
And oftentimes with schools, they'll come back with a budgetary number, and they'll say, you know, what's the max number of camera streams we can monitor for what's within our budget? And we'll give you that number, and our operations team will help you sort of handpick which cameras, or at least we'll make recommendations. Ultimately, it's your call, but school districts have found that pretty helpful, where you come onsite, or we're looking at your maps, and we're saying, hey, there's an overlapping cross shot here or there, maybe we don't have to have, you know, that quad camera covered, but if we go on this Pantill Zoom camera, you'll have sufficient coverage.
Sure. No, I appreciate it.
I also want to say one quick thing, you guys get the first man in, last man out award, because they were here this morning before any of us were set up, so I appreciate that.
But I'm sure you learned something.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, we're on meeting. Took care of your Christmas shopping on your phone over there. That's all we have, we appreciate you guys greatly. Have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. So, any board members have anything further to discuss?
Really briefly, before Mr. Susan jumps in there. I, I just, I, I've had, we've talked a couple of times, just really quickly about schools and how we're going to bite them up. I sent you guys an email. I just want, if we're going to have any, if, if no one's interested in it, I'm fine with that, I'm moving, already moving forward with, you know, visiting the new schools to District 5, but I just would like to get some, hey, let's just leave it, and everybody just go with, even if it's not even, even if Mr. Thomas just has one high school, everybody's good with that, let's just, if we can get kind of some consensus, and then I'll drop it and never mention it again unless it becomes a problem. But we didn't, we haven't really gotten feedback, I haven't gotten feedback, and I think it would be helpful.
You want that now? I'm okay with the way it is now.
I feel as though I really, I mean, my feedback is kind of irrelevant, because it doesn't impact my district whatsoever, so I would prefer the people that's in districts that it impacts to really be the ones to have the feedback with it. So whatever the board wishes on this, I'm going to let you guys take that one.
Of course, we don't have Mr. Thomas here.
Right, right. Mr. Susan, I'm going to say the same, is, the main reason that we, we made the switch is, is to stop the confusion, or to clarify some, some situations. And I think if we do anything other than that, we're just going back on why we did it the first time. So I'm, I'm completely okay. But I do understand, in, in your area, if there's some, if there's a high school where you share many of those students, just make it, make it practice that, you know, both of you are visiting, and, you know, you, more people there than married, that's, I think that'd be fine. And then you can kind of tag team events, or anything you want to do on that.
I want to hear from Mr. Susan, and I've got to responding to that, a suggestion.
I just said, yep.
Did you have anything?
No, I mean, I, I could go on and on about the argument, but I just thought you were looking for.
No, I'm not arguing, I just want some feedback. So I just, so if we're, my, my suggestions moving forward, then if we're going to have an uneven, uneven number of schools is, one, and I do this already in practice, but different ones do different things. If someone reaches out to me, even if it's, there, it's about a situation that's not at one of my schools, and I put that in quotes, I just respond, I just respond. I send it, I don't send it to one of you, if it's not a school in my area, I send it to the right staff member, who's going to get them the right question, I try to get them the answers. I don't worry about, it's not my school. And we had this conversation, when we had this discussion a couple of years ago, we shouldn't have my schools, but you, all of us know, we talk about that, right?
Sure.
So my suggestion would be, if someone reaches out to you because they want to talk to you, or if they reach out to all five of us, you know, whoever can get them to answer quickest, because that's the goal, is to, is to serve our community and to answer those questions. The other thing that it potentially causes unevenness is, we have a practice started by Ms. Wright when she was chair, that, and the pre-expulsion hearings and things like that, that we don't want the person who is the school board member sitting on potentially an expulsion hearing panel, if it's, if it's, I would just suggest, we would do that if it's reasonable, because there are times, schedule conflicts, whatever, that we will try to do that, but we're not going to, I don't think we have it anywhere in writing, Paul, I don't think we do, but that we just leave that flexible, because, you know, especially with an uneven number of students, not just schools, but students, I think it would just be, we'll, we'll try to do that, but if we can't, can't, kind of practice. I think those are the only times that we're really, that and graduation week is really the only times that it would make a huge impact on, on students.
Okay. Okay. Not for that. I'm just going to wait for Ms. Campbell, if you have anything else.
No.
Do you have anything?
I don't.
So Dr. Rendell, one of the things that I noticed over the last couple of years is we've got so many things going on with Destination Mars, we've got Innovation Games, we've got STEM coordinators and everything like that. I was going to ask Dr. Rendell the other day in our one-on-ones, but I thought it'd be more appropriate for you guys, is I would love to put a comprehensive plan together, like, this is what we do, because I think we're doing so much, and it's organically grown in the last four or five years, to the point now where we have a, a significant impact with STEM-related activities throughout our district. Is that something you think we could do, or do I need board approval? Like, I didn't want to give Dr. Rendell his task without you guys knowing about it.
Yeah, so what Mr. Susan is talking about, at least what he communicated to me, was maybe a comprehensive review, a review of all the different programs we have in the STEM field, so to speak. Destination Mars, now Destination Moon. Destination Space, where the sixth graders go to the Kennedy Space Center. The Innovation Games, now we have a STEM unit at every elementary school. We have a lot of high school field trips, actually, that go to the Space Center. There was a physics group from one of our high schools at KSC the other day. So, you know, maybe we put together like a comprehensive review of everything we do and present it to the board, and i.e. the public, so that we all kind of know that, you know, we're knee-deep in STEM already, you know, and, and so, you know, just a kind of a review for, for the board and obviously the public.
What it was for me is, is that, like, we have groups that are always coming up with great ideas, right? Like, the coined thing for every company is to say, oh, we're a STEM company. I remember when COVID hit, like, or when STEM was sexy, like, Office Depot called and said, we're a STEM company. I said, no, you're furniture, like, you're an office company. But the problem is, is that we're always being requested by all these groups to do all these things, and the problem is, is I ran across, and it was like I was dealing with the Somali warlords, was when I, I requested, I said, oh, well, I know we get money from, like, Northrop Grumman over here and all that stuff. I said, well, we can just carve some of that out for Innovation Games, that's what I was trying to do. Oh, boy, you go ahead and try to go down there and try to get that from somebody who else who has a dedicated curriculum-based, I, you know what I mean? So, and we just need to kind of understand where it is. And then what I'd really like to do, Dr. Rendell, is find out who are the big players that don't play with us, right? Like, I, I haven't seen some of our big aerospace companies that have come to us, but we do have some that do, you know what I mean? So just understanding dynamically that whole scope, I think would help us.
Yeah, so as part of that review, we could list all the business partners and what, what programs they're associated with, you know, Boeing's a big partner with us for Destination Mars, now Moon. A lot of companies underwrite the costs associated with Destination Space for the sixth graders, you know, the Education Foundation, you know, is the broker for a lot of that support. And so, yeah, comprehensive review of not just the plans, but how they're funded, and who the partners are, and that could reveal who is not at the table yet, and probably should be.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah, I actually, the part about the sponsors, the part I was going to add in, you know, if we do the presentation, let's, let's highlight the companies that are already supporting us in different ways, and, and maybe that'll highlight the ones that are missing.
Yeah.